Okay, we're ready to open the meeting then. We'll open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
indivisible
with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
And we'll open the meeting with a moment of silence. And as we do, we will obviously be thinking of the victims of COVID-19 and also Rosemary Connolly's father who passed away today. Today, Rosemary? Okay, very sorry, Rosemary.
Three hours.
This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants from the selectmen, from one of them.
Dan, I'll vote you move.
Okay.
I'm just answering second.
Second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Right.
Yes. Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy? We'll skip Randy for a minute. Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Randy is yes.
Thank you, Randy. And I'll vote yes. Also, I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
Yes, from Dan, motion.
Is there a second? Brian is seconding it. Any questions? All those, we'll do a roll call again. Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And now vote yes. And also, the final motion is to accept correspondence in the read file. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a second by Brian. Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And oh, yes, also. And right now, we're about to go into a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. So I'd like to welcome the members of the Finance Committee to the meeting. Brian, I don't, oh, yeah, there he is. I'm seeing Brian. He's down in the lower left-hand corner from my screen, anyway. Welcome to the meeting, Brian. Before I turn it over to you, Brian, to bring to us what the Finance Committee is thinking these days, I'd just like to say, I really enjoyed your summary at one of the recent meetings of the Agreement Committee of the history of Whitman and Hanson's wandering assessment practices. I thought it was clear. I thought it put everything in perspective. And I also thought that your questions to the people from Mars who appeared a week later, to be right on point. Kind of sorry that they didn't get the earring that they maybe could have gotten, but I just wanted to tell you that. It was a nice, it was a good summary of what really happened. And now the floor is yours for a while.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so we would definitely appreciate the opportunity to meet with the Board of Selectmen jointly as often as possible, especially, you know, in the conditions we find ourselves in. Just to give you kind of just a quick history, the Finance Committee has been meeting every week throughout this pandemic via Zoom. And, you know, just a testimony to the resolve of the collective strength of the Finance Committee. I really can't speak, you know, any highly of the work that they put in in the last four or five weeks to get us to where we are. So we appreciate the fact that town meeting now is pushed off a bit. So we do have a little bit more time for a little more of a thoughtful analysis of the, of all of the budget information that you have before you. We, you know, I did bring together an agenda, which I forwarded to the Board of Selectmen. It's, you know, obviously, the topics, each one of them have, you know, a pretty significant conversation that could take place within each one of the agenda items. But I think we have an opportunity to kind of give a quick review of where we are in the budget process. And so the items on the agenda here include the 2021 budget review, the levy funding sources. The second item is a discussion of the compromise negotiation with Hanson. The third item, talk a little bit, if we can, about policy, strategic planning, and sustainability. The fourth item, discuss the COVID-19 revenue impact. And if we have time, we can talk a little bit about Whitman-Hanson Regional High School, the district, and possibly touch on the pay-to-ride, the assessment, the MSBA grants, and the audit. These are all things that are ongoing. You know, the Board of Selectmen, obviously, is involved heavily within a lot of these items as well. So as I mentioned earlier, we do have the benefit of having a group of individuals who have taken it upon themselves to specialize in individual aspects of the budgeting process. And I think it's best if I can allow each of the, each of the person that kind of has taken a lead in each one of these aspects of our agenda tonight to maybe take the lead and open the discussion up. So with that, and at any time, Mr. Chairman, if you wish to jump in or have any type of a discussion, you know, or open it up to the Board of Selectmen, I'm certainly eager to that as well. So I hope that this is, you know, a collaboration and a joint discussion and not just the Finance Committee giving you a rundown, because quite frankly, we do try to keep you, you know, in the loop as to what our discussions are. And the fact that our meetings are brought to you through Whitman-Hanson Cable Access on a weekly basis, I think, benefits not only our communication, but it also benefits the public, I believe, to keep them informed as we go through the process. So with that, and into the 2021 budget, I'd just like to start off and recognize the efforts of John Galvin, who's done a really excellent job in a fresh outlook, I guess, at the revenue. And a summary of a revenue projection is something that's not easy to come up with. And it's obviously a very moving target. So I think working with Frank Lein and John, this year has been a little bit of a learned experience for me to get a little bit more involved in the revenue aspect of it. So with that, John, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, but is there a way you could share the fiscal '21 revenue summary and talk a little bit about where we are?
Well, specifically within the last week or so, I've been working closely with Frank and making sure that, you know, that our numbers, we've been kind of working independently for the last month or so. Frank and Ken have been coming up with their revenue projections, and I've been working it kind of a different way. And I do have to say that in the last week, we've come together closer than I've ever had before. And the last file that Frank sent out, I think, over the weekend, his numbers and my numbers were basically right on. So I think that goes to, you know, not just myself, but in working as a team with Frank and Ken to, you know, to really nail down. And there's been a lot of changes in the last two weeks, three weeks, because of the COVID-19. You know, our forecasts have changed almost, you know, close to half a million dollars in what we thought we were going to have in revenue between cherry sheets and local receipts. And to, you know, to come up with kind of a, you know, an agreement on what we think is best going forward for the town. So, you know, Frank sent out a file even as lately as today with, you know, the revenue projections that he had. And honestly, my numbers are right with Frank. So I think we're in a good spot, in my opinion.
That's great to hear. That's great to hear, John. Frank, you want to add anything to what John said?
Frank, you're muted. You're muted, Frank.
Yeah, I'm not just moving, Frank, but we can't hear you.
That's not necessarily a bad thing. The, we managed to, I almost want to come to a concession among the three of us as to what we are doing, our past numbers and future numbers to be. The significant impacts to us are going to be in state aid, certain areas of local revenue. And we really did a painstaking analysis going back to '18 to be sure we understood the trends and how the change in the way things are being done now under COVID have affected that change. The numbers that you received today, as always, are guesses, but they're our best guess as to what we're looking at for 2021. And I do think they are marginally, I don't know if John will agree with me, but I think they're marginally conservative. I don't think we'll get in trouble following them, but I don't think they're so crazy that they won't come in close to that. And that becomes the basis for how we move forward with the 2021 budget.
I agree. I agree with that. And that was one of the things that consultant Mr. Madden wanted us to really take that. And that in the past, we've been very aggressive with our estimates on our local receipts. And this year, I think we took a more conservative approach with it. And specifically now, in the last couple of weeks, when things have taken a downturn, I think we were, you know, we were already, it didn't impact our budget as much as it could have because we had already been conservative. So by making some adjustments, and we didn't have to go down maybe as far as we would have had to possibly in the past because we were already a little bit more conservative than we had been.
But having said that, we loped $600,000 for our revenue estimates.
Right. And that, there's a lot of moving parts just within that one section as far as, you know, the anticipated local receipts. Because you're forecasting how much we're taking in in things like motor vehicle excise in a very difficult economy. Meals tax in the, you know, a situation where the restaurants are on the edge. So there are a lot of pieces to that. And again, it's reflected in the fiscal '21 revenue summary that everybody should have a copy updated on the 4/20. It's the most recent copy, I believe. Frank, is that the most recent copy is dated?
The worksheet I sent out today recaps all of the estimated revenues in, I guess it would be page two of the worksheet showing the, just, we lose things here. I have no idea what I'm doing. There we go. The revenues were actually updated today. We were relying heavily on the ambulance fund to support the capital that we're bringing forward this year in order to preserve free cash. And as of today, after speaking with both the town accountant and the fire chief, we've come up with a estimate or a recognition of $984,000 that we have taken in. And that's the number we're working with. I think even if we ultimately adopt this budget and move forward with it, I don't think I would change anything. If we go into town meeting a month later, I would rather leave that fixed where it is. And whatever's left will flow into free cash in our next fiscal year.
I will certainly defer any other comments associated with that particular summary, if anybody has any, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair. Otherwise, I would suggest perhaps we move to the that describes the warrant articles summary, which is dated May 5th. Frank, are you putting up the documents or is John?
I was the one that did that. I can do it again if you want. I've made the, Frank sent a late update today, and I've made the change on mine. So if you want, I can display it.
Why don't you do it, Frank?
Okay. If I can figure it out, hold on. That should be it. That's it, right, Frank?
That is it. So just looking at this, go across the top of the form where it describes what each column is. In the first line, in row number two, you have basically calculation of what's left if we do everything that's spelled out in this chart. And I have to emphasize, that assumes that we fund everything that's in the warrant. We would certainly maximize our levy to the point where we've spent $582,000 more. We then would utilize the ambulance fund to adjust our levy that we're not in the red. And then the item that is showing is free cash, basically coming out of free cash because we're using those other available funds for the large numbers, like the 250 for the ambulance, the enterprise funds for two trucks for the DPW, and the enterprise funds to fund the study for the DPW. So what remains, and the Capital Committee has not voted on all of these articles yet.
Frank, can I interrupt you there? And perhaps we could just hear from Dave, just to outline what the capital, the Building Facilities and Capital Expenditure Committee has done to date, just as, you know, a bit of a quick review. Dave, is that possible?
Sure, yeah, I wasn't prepared. But essentially, there's a, we're looking specifically at capital warrant articles. And we've reviewed, we reviewed them all and only voted on a handful, which include, let's see, the reimbursement for the Deval Cheer Lift, the Whitman-Hanson Middle School feasibility study. Sorry, I wasn't prepared, so I'm not 100%. The extra $100,000 toward streets and roads. It's three. There's four more in there. We've had some questions in regards to some of the larger capital requests, specifically the school district telephone upgrade and the DPW building feasibility study. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so, you know, the Finance Committee has obviously been working specifically with the Building Facilities Capital Expenditure Committee. And what we're really doing is kind of giving them a little bit of time, since we have done time before town meeting, to do a complete recommendation on all of the capital articles that you see on this particular list. So from there, we can then, you know, work collectively to make a recommendation to town meeting. So I think it's important for the Board of Selectmen also because historically, the Board of Selectmen has been very instrumental in reviewing capital articles that have been submitted and, you know, at some point, recognizing that some should go forward, some relate to policy and procedures. An example as well is for the police vehicles. Initially, the police vehicles, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, came onto this matrix as a lease purchase. And, you know, we are really trying to stay with the recommendations of a consultant and move away from lease purchases and look to purchasing vehicles as we can afford them. So I think that's what we looked at most recently with those two warrant articles. But they have yet to be reviewed, those have yet to be reviewed for recommendation by the Capital Committee, right? Is that correct?
Correct. What also occurred that helps us in this process is there was a plan to purchase two vehicles, obviously to replace all the vehicles. And unfortunately, there was a motor vehicle accident in January that ended up totaling one of our older Cruisers. But because we purchased replacement value insurance, a new Cruiser is going to be purchased to replace that. And the cost to the town in direct funds will probably be about $2,000. So we're still able to purchase two vehicles this year and to do it without lease purchasing or borrowing.
So another warrant article that Frank and I discussed yesterday, I believe, was Article 31. And maybe this is something that the board could look towards past practice or policy to make a recommendation. We, as the Finance Committee, have not discussed all of these warrant articles, this one included. So this one is supplemental payment for COA hire. So I think Frank could maybe give a summary on how this got here and what the recommendation could be.
This is a request by the Council on Aging to basically overlap the hiring of a director so that the director can be hired and the retired director could stay on for a couple of weeks working with the director to familiarize that person with the operation. I, you know, I'm all for training. I'm all for supporting positions and educating people as to their jobs. But we have really never hired dual management. When we appoint someone to a managerial position, we assume that person is prepared to take on that responsibility. And the question is whether, particularly with the narrowing revenues that we're working with, if we can afford the luxury of employing someone in a transitional capacity. So that's something I think we probably need to talk about.
So there, I mean, the dollar figure isn't a lot of money, but, you know, that's something we could probably think about passing over or eliminating from the warrant based on that conversation. Are there any other questions from anyone from the Finance Committee or Board of Selectmen related to this particular document on the warrant articles for the upcoming meeting?
I have a question.
I do as well.
Kathleen, go ahead.
My question is, relates to the feasibility study, which I thought was coming out of free cash, and now it's being, it's listed as borrowing. Is that something that's up for discussion? Or how did that, how did that transition occur?
That's what I raised my hand for.
Me too.
In looking at the significant impact to our finances, it seemed to make a lot of sense to borrow as opposed to spending the cash upfront for the feasibility study. The feasibility study, if we move forward with a building plan, will be reimbursed at whatever reimbursement rate MSBA gives us for the project. It's my thought, and it's up for discussion, that we may be better off borrowing the $850,000. The interest rate is going to be approximately 1.5%. And we can do it either as a ban for a series of years while we work through the planning process for the new building. Or we can amortize it over a three-year period if we don't want to carry that debt into the next phase. But it gives us some options we don't have if we use our free cash right now. We go into the year with no, no hedge if we're wrong on some of these numbers.
Kathleen, if I may, this does not, this will not require approval of the voters at the vote. So it's, you know, I know we had had discussions in the past about doing it as a debt exclusion. That's not what this is. So, you know, it'll, until we know what that amount is that we'll actually have to carry, I mean, it's not going to take the $850,000 totally away. But Frank, what do you think it'll maybe be? $350,000, maybe around there, I guess?
Certainly 300 plus would be our annual debt service if we choose to amortize over three years.
Right.
Go longer, or we could simply do bands for three years. The problem with that is, whether we do the project or not, if we do bands at the end of three years, we need to come up with the $850,000.
Right, right.
Oh, Kathleen, mindful of our vote that the Finance Committee took when we brought this up three meetings ago, four meetings ago, perhaps. You know, it was the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to fund this particular warrant article out of available funds. So Frank, technically, this isn't available funds. This is something nearer to available funds than a debt exclusion vote, but...
Well, yeah, it's borrowing. It's going to town meeting and saying, please authorize us to borrow $850,000. And I don't have the numbers yet, but I did request, last week I spoke with John Tuffy and requested that he get me some numbers on what that borrowing entails. It's not something we would do because it's an SBA project. And in order for this borrowing to be part of the MSBA program, the borrower has to be the regional school district. So they would be borrowing in our behalf.
Okay. So I think this is a topic that we're going to continue to discuss at Finance Committee meetings.
Okay.
Actually, all of these funding sources are certainly something that we have more discussion to have, so.
If I could just jump in here, borrowing this within the levy limit, yeah, with, yeah, without a debt exclusion is consistent with the recommendations of the Callan Center Capital Improvement Plan we brought in a year and a half ago now.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, are there any other questions with regard to the, this particular spreadsheet? We could probably pull that down if not, John.
Take that down.
I got a question on the, on the streetlights. I'm not sure exactly what that $133,000 represents.
Okay. We're making a payment out of available funds because our, we borrowed the money for the streetlights. And a payment is due, I believe, the third month. So we have the funds to pay the interest in some principal on the streetlights from a grant. But that remaining balance is what will be owed after we make that payment. And I would certainly like to retire that debt this year so that we're not carrying it into the future. It is a result of some difficulties we had installing the lights when we found that the National Grid folks used improper wiring to power the lights. And we had to contract with someone to go out and rewire all those lights. It has been and continues to be my intent to pursue National Grid for reimbursement for those costs. Their response to us, by the way, was, the contract says you bought the lights. Their response to us, by the way, was, uh, the contract says you bought the lights as is, to which my response was, yes, but you didn't disclose a material defect. And it, it, it is likely going to involve some participation by our attorney. So we want to get this cleaned up before we go down that road.
The, the question I had is, is, so with, with the, with the streetlights, i- it's my understanding that the town of Whitman voted to raise and appropriate the total funding for the project.
Correct.
And, and then money was borrowed against that, against that raised and appropriated amount. So why, why does more money have to come out of subsequent, uh, budgets if, if, if money was already raised and appropriated?
Because the cost of the replacement wiring was not part of what we initially borrowed. What we borrowed was the straight cost of the streetlights and an estimate to install them. So having done that, we then had to face these additional costs, which, uh, we feel National Grid is responsible for and they are indicating we're not. It's, it's, it's additional money. It's above and beyond what we borrowed when we purchased the streetlights.
So does that answer your question?
Well, I guess it raises more questions. So i- it's, it's how, how is money raised and appropriated to pay the additional funding for the project? So you're saying
An article.
It, uh, uh, this article or prior articles?
This article.
Okay. So, so this isn't really paying off a debt. It's raising appropriating funds for a project that went over budget for, for whatever reason.
Yeah, you, that's a fair argument.
Okay.
Okay. Is anybody else, uh, any other questions on this, um, worksheet? If not, uh,
Rick, it's Al. How are you?
Good, Al. How are you?
Do we have a letting zone of what it's going to cost us to resolve the situation? With the letting situation?
Well, right now, we're going after National Grid for the cost to install the appropriate wiring. We will hire counsel, uh, if necessary. And we will do what we have to do to raise our claim and support it. If National Grid chooses not to pay, then we go to Superior Court, we present our argument and we win or lose.
Do they give us any type of monies it would cost or a timeframe that they get back to us on that?
Who are we talking about?
Who would get back? National Grid.
National Grid said we're not doing anything.
So what do we do as a town? Would it kind of fix, fix the problem?
Right now, there's no one you can talk to at National Grid for pretty often.
Okay, sure.
As this situation settles down, we're going back to them. We'll go to Joe Carroll, who's the senior vice president for New England. And we'll have a sit down and talk with them and say, here's what we're going to do. I've tried to do that in the past, just haven't been able to put it together. And again, their corporate people are saying, you purchased the lights as is. Uh, you bought a used car. You didn't look at it well enough. Too bad. I would accept that argument, except that there were public utility who was inappropriately wiring streetlights. I presented this argument to the Board of Selectmen a year and a half ago. We analyzed it. We decided to go ahead and do what was necessary to safely mount the lights and then to pursue National Grid for payment. Ultimately, we could lose in court. They could say, hey, your contract says as is. Good luck.
Thanks, Frank.
Have they, have they done this in other towns?
Yes.
Have those other towns sued? Is there any?
Yeah.
The town that we're aware of.
There are the towns that, um, are impacted by the, the wiring. Um, all were a part of the MAPC original grant for the streetlights.
Uh huh.
Um, the wiring issue was uncovered pretty much all at the same time, uh, by Arden, who, did a lot of the lights in a lot of the other towns. Um, so we are not the only town that this happened to.
Okay. And, and what results of those lawsuits or are they still ongoing for those other towns?
No, everybody right now is still, um, conversations were happening, um, with the consultants and National Grid. Um, and then this pandemic happened. So everything is kind of come to a halt. But I suspect that it will pick up once we pass this time.
Are we thinking about doing a class action or is it just the town, our town?
I don't believe there's enough participants for a class action.
Okay.
We're not considering that at this point. If it's council recommendation.
That's a question, Frank, just a
Thank you.
Who oversees this from the town?
My office.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions, uh, on these particular warrant articles that are, again, we are still working, uh, with the Building Facilities and Capital Expenditure Committee to, to get the final recommendations. We will, we will be working, um, you know, with them and the Board of Selectmen to, to complete our recommendations. Right now, uh, the Finance Committee has not voted, uh, any of these particular warrant articles. We have started in with the Article Two, but we have not, um, made any recommendations or votes on any of the, uh, other articles for the warrant.
Rick, with, uh, with that comment, I think where this is our first public meeting that people may be watching and, and tuning into for progress on our budget. I think we should make it clear that, um, while we started our budget planning on one plateau, we had to move as a result of everything that's happened in the last few months. Uh, the budget we are presenting today is a, uh, certainly a frugal budget. It does not, uh, contemplate salary increases, uh, across the board. In fact, right now, the only agreement we have that reflects, uh, a new contract for fiscal year 21 is the Fire Department. Uh, their union moved, uh, forward when we invited them too early in the process. And we reached an agreement before COVID-19 hit. So we do have an agreement with the IAFF for a salary increase of 2% for Fire, but we have no other increase offers across the board. And people show, uh, this is, this is a very bare bones budget.
With, with respect to the Board of Selectmen's vote on that, um, aspect of Article Two, I, you know, it's not an easy decision. Um, but I, I think, uh, you know, for one, I concur that this is the time. Um, it's, we're, we're, we're certainly uncharted waters, but you know, the, we have been talking about reining in salaries for a while and, um, you know, I, I, I would hope that, um, you know, the sacrifices that the town departments are making, is recognized throughout all of the departments, uh, that we're dealing with here. Um, so moving forward, um, you know, we have opened up a, 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 a really interesting dialogue, I would say, with the, um, Regional School District. And, and I think it's really time that we talk about, um, you know, what kind of commitments they can make, uh, in, in this particular aspect of the budget as well. So um, I know the, um, audit is something that is initiated. Um, I think it will help us get, you know, a little bit more insight into how the district, uh, budget, uh, works, the inner workings, uh, if you will. So like I said, just going back to the recommendation that the Board of Selectmen made with the, um, no colas for the fiscal year 2021. It's a difficult decision, but again, I, I think it's one that really had to be made. So I just wanted to recognize, uh, that, that aspect of it. Um, do you want to take a look a little bit at Article Two? Um, that might be a difficult document to share, right? With the 10 pages?
So it's 10 pages.
Yeah, 10 pages. Maybe just, um, you know, a, a, a bit of a summary, I guess, um, where we have, we have looked at some of the, um, line items within Article Two. But again, this is a document that's, uh, you know, still very much in flux. And the regional school budget, uh, uh, really holding us hostage, uh, to really get, uh, to really get this thing finalized before town meeting. So.
You know, that, that's a really important point to make as, as we look at our budget this year. The only areas of the budget that have significant growth are education and certain fixed costs. Whitman Hansen, uh, with what we have allocated right now is $761,000. South Shore is, uh, both combining South Shore and North Aggie is 21,000. The next big numbers we hit are unfortunately things we have no control over. There's stormwater management. That's a new line in Article Two and it's $113,000. But it's federally mandated and we have to do it. The other big number in the DPD is trash, $102,000. We are actually paying comparably for recycling costs that we do just to throw trash away. The market's completely died on that. And then if you move down to the, uh, the essentials there, Veterans Benefits, we're projecting an increase of $48,000 this year. In point of fact, we are in a deficit with that account right now. And we will be looking to do line item transfers, uh, for some budgets, but Trins, I believe we had a, uh, appropriation in the special area of the town warrant. So those, those numbers have a serious impact on us. Then you look at, uh, county retirement, something we have no control over ours. Our increased assessment this year is $212,000. Medical and life insurance. I had an inquiry from someone about that, which I responded to the other day. We're looking at a budget increase of $46,000. And then general insurance is $20,000. So when, when you look at these numbers, even though we're actually, um, curtailing expense Article Two and our borrowing cost, all of the things that represent raise and appropriate, are going up a million three this year. It's a big number.
And then you, also the whole 261A line there for all of the, uh, interest and maturing debt that is now incorporated within Article Two is something new for this fiscal year as well. So.
And that was in following with the recommendations of the Madden, um, study that we should include those in the regular levy as opposed to carrying them as articles because they're regular budget numbers. And that's one area where, uh, we've actually we've gone down almost $30,000 in debt expense. We'll be making that up with these other debt issues as we, as we issue them.
So before we leave Article Two, just a general going around the table at last week's Finance Committee, I asked, um, each committee member information about what they would like to discuss with, with the Board of Selectmen. Um, and generally speaking, each town department is a percentage of the total budget. And I think, and I don't know Rosemary, if you're up to it, but you did have, you know, a, a, a really thoughtful and to be clear, Rosemary, throughout this, this entire budget cycle has always been thinking about ways that we look at, uh, how we, how we divide up our very limited resources within each town department. So I don't know if you're up, uh, Rosemary?
No, no, I, I did have a question on, um, we're budgeting for a whole different environment, a whole different, uh, going into this year, we're, we're budgeting, you know, for a summer that we probably won't open the pool, um, that we may not see people at the libraries. We'll be using buildings differently. We'll be using things differently. And, uh, have we rethought our budgeting to this new environment for the year? Could, are we, what are we doing to, could we put money in places? Say we might need more with Fire or Police or Health Department, but we aren't going to be using anything for, you know, the parks or, you know, scheduling baseball fields. Could we rethink how we're using our money? Uh, what have we done in respect?
Well, I'd like to respond to that. The, the approach that we take to budgeting obviously entails the functions of the departments unless we're willing is very little of those budgets you mentioned that are going to reflect any cost savings. If we start with recreation, most of their expenditure are covered by revolving accounts. We're not getting the revenue and we're not spending the money. I mean, the, the entire recreation budget is $32,000. And 20% of that is the director's salary.
So what sort of, what sort of work would the director be doing this year?
I would hope trying to, well, first of all, we don't have a director right now. So let's make it clear. When we do hire a director, I would hope that that director is going to be working on planning programs for the town and different opportunities that we may offer for people for recreational purposes. But if you want to shave three months of that budget off, it's, it's not a meaningful amount of money employed anywhere else. Again, it's, you know, that isn't low hanging fruit. That's the bare bones.
Yeah. How about air conditioning and buildings we're not using? All those sorts of things?
Still going to keep them temperature managed. We may not run them at 72 degrees. We might raise the air conditioning to 75 or 80, but you can't overheat the buildings.
Okay. So, so all in all, you have been thinking about this is, is what I'm asking.
Absolutely. I mean, I looked at the, the utilities and, um, and maintenance for the library for the year at $25,000. We probably saved 2,000 of that, 3,000 of that, but it, none of those there is no significant amount of opportunity for those numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Frank, just a quick follow-up on, has there been a recent, um, department budget manager meeting within the, I, I know obviously you can't meet, uh, you know, with the restrictions of the COVID-19 and the pandemic, but has there been any thought to put together a budget manager meeting before town meeting to
Yes, we always, we always do that before town meeting. The last meeting we had was a couple of weeks ago when, uh, I discussed with the board our, our, uh, changing circumstances. And we determined that we're not going off of colas. Needless to say, that wasn't a happy meeting. But everybody understood. I, I, I can tell you by and large, the employees in the town have been very responsive to, uh, the issues that we're have been very responsive to the issues that we're facing. We, we started social distancing people. We, we set up alternate work schedules so we didn't have everyone in every office every day. And all of this was done to combat the spread of the virus. Recently, as in yesterday or today, the days run together right now. A question came up as to whether or not a particular office could work more hours. And my response to that was, so long as we can safely and appropriately social distance, I'm fine with everybody assigned to an office working in that office. We, we have staggered schedules and, and we're probably going to change those in one or two offices in the town hall as we find we need more work hours in the office to get things done. So that's something I planned on discussing with the board in a managerial approach a little later. But we're doing our best to keep things operating the way they should be.
Okay. Anybody else for anything on Article Two? As I said, it definitely is a work in progress. Just want to try to, you know, communicate where we are with the Board of Selectmen, if, you know, let you know where we're going.
Dan, you're muted. Dan has a question though. You're muted, Dan.
I'm muted? By the way?
You're good now, you're good. Okay, good.
I was looking at Article Two and there's some line items that I'm concerned about. The very first one is town meeting elections. I mean, it's up 80%. I know we're having a presidential election, but the fact that we're, you know, it's going from an additional $20,000. I don't, you know, just because the amount of money is there doesn't mean it, it may all have to be spent. I mean, it's a significant amount of money to hold town meeting, town election, and then a, then a full election in November.
Right, remember Dan, that presidential election is, I, I don't know at this point what November is going to look like. But typically, a presidential election in November is an all hands event. We bring in twice the number of peoples. We operate from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So the staff hours are 6:00 AM till at least 11:30 midnight. There, that election alone is probably $14,000. And that election is one we don't normally have.
And you have the further cost of early voting as well, which also adds to the cost.
Yeah, early voting means that you're not checking anybody in. It's, you know, it's being done through the mail. I mean, you have to do the paperwork. I, I'm just saying it's a huge increase and I'm just hoping that, you know, it's used appropriately. That being said, now I'm looking at the Whitman Hansen budget, the increase of 700, around $760,000. Is that going with the statutory method, Frank?
Okay, that's the elephant in the room for us.
That's our next, that's our next agenda item, Dan. And certainly, yeah, that definitely is a, a, a big issue. Yeah, well.
Okay. And now, and one other question I have is in the library. The, the expense line has increased by almost 18%. The library's closed. What, I mean, I, I don't understand the, the increase in the expense unless it's, you know, the lighting and the heating and whatever. There's nobody in there.
It is in keeping in line with the Mass Board of Libraries guidelines for expenditures for publications, periodicals, and materials. I will say, there has been pretty remarkable is happening in towns around us. There are two towns right now that have furloughed, and one of them is a neighboring town, have furloughed all of their employees. The fall, the only employee being kept on the job is the director. And that reflects their intent not to reopen until September. We haven't addressed that yet. And it's probably something that should be discussed with the selectmen that need to get a better understanding of what we can do. There's nothing moving in and out of the library. The biggest problem that was handling materials that could be contaminated with the COVID virus. So everything came to a screeching halt. There is a practical
Okay.
possibility to maintain library operations and borrowing through distancing and, and through aging out the returns. You know, you set up a return rack and instead of doing anything, look, it sits there for seven to 14 days to make sure that anything that could be contaminated is gone and then recycled. But that's a whole different way of doing business. That has to be addressed with the press these and the selectmen.
Okay. One of the other things, Dan, and we did touch on this a little bit when we met with the budget managers early in the budget season. And that is about the accreditation of the library. I think, you know, each department was told to hold the line on a certain percentage in response to not only the recommendation of the consultant, but to Board of Selectmen's vote that said if there is going to be a significant increase in any of your department budgets, it has to be justified. So I think the library, you know, made a, you know, very, they were right on the line of losing accreditation with their budget, as I recall from that meeting. So I think each department, as Frank made a mention of, has done an extraordinary job to try to get these budgets pared down as far as they can and utilize the limited resources that we have. We are really not over our financial crisis that we have been in for the last two years. Believe it or not, it has not healed itself. So we're, we're going into next year with some pre-directations of where we're going to be.
Okay. Just quickly, just, the library has electronic books. And I know they're a little more expensive. Are they, you know, they might be ordering those. But are we using, are we lending out our Wi-Fi for students? And are we allowing people to go in the parking lot and use the Wi-Fi as well?
As far as I know, right now, we continue to maintain electronic book borrowing. We belong to the O'Colony Network. We belong to a secondary network. And there's also the Boston Public Library online network. So people are continuing to borrow books electronically. That has no impact on us. As far as the devices go, I don't know how we would be lending them out where we're not providing any opportunity for people to come into or transact with the library. So my, my gut answer to that would be no, we're probably not doing that. We have two devices. They're $40 a month for each device and we lend them out for up to two weeks. But my guess is we're not lending them out right now.
Are there any questions back to Article Two or any other aspect of our agenda item of the 2021 budget? Just, John, I can't see everyone, so I'm depending on you and the chair. I, I only can see six boxes at a time. So, so if someone has a question, I'm not able to see it, so.
I don't see ends up, and I see 16 boxes.
Yeah, I'll help you out.
Okay. So if there are no further questions regarding the budget, I'm sure we're going to revisit it. I mean, we still have a significant amount of work to do with that. But moving into our second agenda item, the compromise negotiations with Hanson. Dan, as you had mentioned during the budget discussion, this is something that, you know, obviously has gotten a lot of discussion. There's a lot of passionate opinions that abound. So as the chairman mentioned earlier, that I have probably spoke a little more than I should at our Regional Agreement Amendment Committee meetings. But I think my, my charge is, as the chairman of the Finance Committee, is to convey the position of the nine-member board. And we have voted unanimously on several occasions not to support anything but the statutory method going forward, beginning with this year. So I think, preface the, the comments that I made before the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, there was an enormous amount of work that went on behind the scenes to develop spreadsheets and data that show significant historical importance in this issue. So I think for this particular opening comment, I'd like to move to Kathleen. And again, I'm, I know I'm putting people on the spot, but Kathleen O'Tina has done an enormous amount of work with this, with the preparation for addressing the concerns. And so Kathleen, would you like to just start the conversation and then hopefully we can hear from the Board of Selectmen who have been involved with this process?
I'm, I'm happy to help out here, Chairman Anderson. As you know, I'm a, I'm a numberer. I do better at analysis, I've done that throughout my career. And so I came to this perspective of how did we get into this problem first place? And the honest answer is the stat method was never properly calculated. People who, we were following the statutory method apparently, never took the time to do the math. And so over the course of the last six fiscal years, Whitman has already paid $4.1 million that would have been paid by our partner town had the statutory method been enforced. And I tried to nicely inform both you and the Chair of the Hanson Fund Inc. Com that the real problem is the drop in Chapter 70 money that is being allocated for Hanson. They've lost $3 million in Chapter 70 money that has caused them to have their minimum local contribution rise. And so when we come into fiscal '21 and the statutory method has finally been revealed to be not that difficult to understand, the state calculates the foundation budget. The state then determines the minimum local contribution based on the aggregate wealth method. The state does all these calculations for us. Then they subtract the MRC from the foundation and gives us our Chapter 70 money. And that money is attached to the individual towns. A check does go to the regional school district in totals. And there's hold harmless money that prevents the towns from experiencing a significant decrease in Chapter 78. But it does not belong to either Whitman or Hanson, it belongs to the district. But that's the hold harmless. And what we're facing now is a shift of a little bit more than $1 million in, by using the statutory method to essentially force Hanson to start paying its fair share of the cost of funding the education for the 3,700 children who attend the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. And we can't go back in terms of suing or trying to recapture that money, apparently. But we certainly can't go forward in continuing to subsidize Hanson's bill. Whitman taxpayers should be paying Whitman's bills. Hanson taxpayers should be paying Hanson's bills. And I do understand that a compromise has been suggested or several compromises have been suggested. But the nature of the compromise is not anything that has been discussed in open meeting, other than the rack. And the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee has met a couple of times. I've sat in to listen to those meetings. And I, I'm not convinced that any kind of compromise is in the best interest of the Whitman taxpayer.
Can I just interject here? We don't get aid we don't need. So we don't have aid we can give away. The aid is very specific to the need of the town. So, and, and I'm going to pull up something from mass budgets right before the 2007 correction where it says, prior to this, the other options would have been to force the community to cut police, fire, and other essential services to pay for education. Here we are saying we can't pay for cost of living for our police officers, yet we're going to pay for another community. Are they telling their police officers or their, you know, other services that they, DPWs, that they're not going to get cost of living? I haven't heard them say that. Well, we're paying their bills. We don't get extra money. We get enough to help us afford education. We have already burdened for a long time. They don't get it because they can afford it. This whole idea that Hanson can't afford, if, if this is true, then they go to the state and they say, hey, you've miscalculated. But if they aren't getting the aid, it means they can afford it. And that's the fact. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you, with respect to the chair, if we could have the Board of Selectmen who are involved in this process perhaps give some perspective of, of, of why they are still going down this road, if in fact they still are.
Go ahead, Justin. Sure, I'll, I'll take that as my cue. So, so the Board of Selectmen voted me to represent them on this Regional Agreement Amendment Committee with the goal of amending the regional agreement as well as reaching a budget for this year. In the conversations that I've had so far, it, it's been made clear that Hanson does not plan to fully fund the school budget. They've, they've given numbers that they say they can afford and they don't plan on exceeding those numbers. The options that we have in front of us, if we, I, I understand how we got here and I don't disagree with the comments that have been made so far. But in trying to find a path out of this situation, we can either let Hanson underfund the school system and meet our statutory obligation to, to lay off teachers in that scenario. We can force a 1/12 budget by voting down the, the budget or letting Hanson vote the budget down. Or we can make up the difference and protect the schools and the students from a dispute between the towns. So with that in mind, that's why I've been trying to continue to reach an agreement, you know, one-time relief that includes the four teachers for equity in the elementary schools as my two conditions to move both towns forward.
I'm so sorry, but I don't understand what you mean. I know plenty of people in Hanson that care about education. So this idea that the people of Hanson would vote differently, they're, they care about education. They, they, if they were educated to the fact that they're, they weren't investing correctly, then they would not make bad decisions. I don't think the people of Hanson's, the voters of Hanson's are any better than the voters of Whitman's. It, it's up to their leadership to step forward and it's up to the schools to set a budget that children need. And I believe the people of Hanson will step forward and educate their own children. They will not, I mean, are you trying to say that they will literally underfund their own children and our children to not, because they don't have access to our state aid? Is that what you're trying to say, Justin? Because that's what it sounds like.
I'm saying that they are willing to, that, that, that so far, they are willing to not exceed the numbers that they've put forward.
So basically, you, you're saying just that. And I'm glad that that's public and I hope the people of Hanson hear that. Because that's terrible.
Yeah, I would go so far to say through the chair that the town of Whitman is being taken for a ride with this entire charade. And I think it's long time that we step out of this queue and move forward with the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee for what its purpose is for. It is for to create amendments to the agreement that are in the best interest of the student, faculty, and both towns that serve this district. So I, I really have a problem when Hanson says that they're not going to pay their fair share. I don't, I, I, with respect to Rosemary, I think I agree totally that they're not. I mean, how much information have you gotten from the town of Hanson with respect to their budget for this fiscal year? Do you know what, what type, how much money they have in stabilization, for instance? Or how much money they are planning on, you know, allocating to the various departments? How can you say that that is their plan when you haven't seen any of their financial information?
It took a very long time to get to, even getting a It took a very long time to get to even getting a number from the Hanson Board of Selectmen and the town administrator for what they were able to afford this year or willing to afford, however you want to say it. And I only got that number this past week.
So that's part of this, that's part of the charade that I grow increasingly tired of every single day. And to sit on that Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, week after week, and for people to wring their hands and say, well, we're waiting for this deal, it's time for the town of Hanson to educate their citizens about how they need to pay their bills. We're not going to pay Hanson's bills. That, I mean, I can think of several years in the most recent budget where we have taken money out of stabilization to pay assessment. We have taken difficult steps. We have formed a, an override committee to evaluate the need for the town to take an override. We've hired consultants. We've done a lot of due diligence here to make sure that we, at the end of the day, can responsibly allocate the limited resources of this community. But to say that we're going to supplement Hanson's budget with the Whitman taxpayer, I think is absurd. And like I said, I would like to think that we are almost exhausted this process so that we can move forward. And so that the school can come up with a budget.
The school committee should. The school committee should vote about it. It's been, it's been well overdue. I will just add that at the last or at two of the three meetings we've had for the Regional Agreement Committee, the Chair of the Hanson Board of Selectmen has said that she believes we're going to end up in the statutory method no matter what happens. I think that is a step in the right direction, and if we can, if we know we're going to end up in a statutory method, I don't think it's worth laying off teachers this year to get there. I think that we can get there next year.
We don't have to lay off teachers. We're not laying off teachers. This is not on Whitman. We are willing to fund. We have the money. We've made, we've made schools a priority. We are willing to fund. So it's not us. And that, that whole framework is off. The schools put forth a budget that funds, and I believe in the Whitman citizens. I believe if their, if their leaders are telling the truth and going forward and presenting the truth, I believe if they adjust their budget to the amount that they've misallocated with Whitman's money for many, many years, then they will be able to do this. But this whole idea that everybody but Whitman's to blame for all of this or Whitman's responsibility is all this, Whitman is funding to that 24, was it 38% now? They just have to meet it. So no, it is not Whitman that has to do with it or even step forward. It's them that have, leaders in that town have to begin to lead and care for their kids and care for their community and be honest. They knew. I just watched a committee meeting for September 24th with a selectman that talked about statutory of 2017. So they knew. So this is not true, that they didn't know. It's a surprise. It's not true. They knew, and they didn't take the steps. And that's their leadership. And they should now tell the truth and start to correct their budgets and move forward.
And I just want to add that I appreciate the efforts that have been made by people who have the sincere belief that the children need to be protected by going the extra mile. But I'm willing to take the 1/12 budget that the Commissioner of Education puts in place for us, because the Commissioner of Education has dedicated his life to providing sound education for children. He's not a politician. He's an educator. So if we are forced to go to the Commissioner of Education and DESI and have them put forth a 12 budget for us, which all regional districts will be operating under anyway unless there are town meetings, my confidence lies with the Commissioner of Education, not one person in the city, in the town of Hanson. They've been, they've been stonewalling us. They've crossed their arms across their chest from day one and said, we're not voting a budget until we get a method agreed on. We're not doing anything till there's a compromise. And from my position, there is no compromise. So let's go with the Commissioner and put this argument to bed. Stop wasting everybody's time.
That's probably a good time for me to let the rest of the, know that I was on a call with the superintendent and Chris Lynch with DESI today and asked what a 1/12 budget would look like. And the way Chris Lynch described it was it will, in all likelihood, be last year's number assessed by a statutory method with Whitman's assessment actually going down. So this, which the superintendent has described as 40-plus positions lost.
I've heard that, Justin, but I've also read the Commissioner's April 23rd memo where the formula for submitting information to the Commissioner if we don't have a budget includes the proposed fiscal '21 budget. And that information will be forwarded to the Commissioner. They are not going to have its sitting in this COVID outbreak in a class size of 40 to 50 kids. If anything, they should be sitting in a class size of 12. So I don't believe this scare tactic of the 1/12 budget is going to decimate the schools.
With all due respect, I am not going to, I think we need to hear this directly. I am, I am actually questioning a lot of the things that I'm hearing, I heard from the Commissioner. There's a lot of these meetings that should be out in public that are behind closed doors, and the information coming back is very slanted. I'll hear it from them directly. I'll read what they have. But honestly, we're hearing it was legal, this whole method was legal, last RAC committee, no, it wasn't. The alternative method was never legal. And the way they did it was, our citizens were never given the opportunity to vote away their state aid. Chapter 70 money is financial protection for the town that it's allocated to. Financial protection. It was given away, it has to be given away with a choice, a vote that they choose, knowledgeable vote. Our number was. It was literally manipulated away. So from here on in, it's got to be an open meeting, none of these backdoor deals, it's got to stop. We already hear about meetings that happened at the RAC that had more than four committee members. Now, this committee seems to shift a lot, its components, but everybody's working together. And I'm really concerned, there's a lot of skating, open meeting laws, and then people giving very filtered versions of what was said. So with all due respect, until I hear it directly, I really don't put much weight on it.
So, Justin, back, back to the comment, the most dire predictions are coming from Hanson, wouldn't you say? I mean, they have a vested interest to make this as gloomy as possible.
The most dire predictions so far are coming from the superintendent on what a 1/12 budget would look like. That's the most dire.
Right. But, but, but you're hearing the, the commitment of the town of Hanson's taxpayers, from whom? From the administration of the town of Hanson. That's it. You have no idea about their budget. You have no idea about their willingness or ability to pay. You're being played. I just, I don't, I, with all due respect, I understand your position. I understand the need for us to perpetuate a real good relationship with the town of Hanson.
The Mars analysis last year says that Hanson does have an ability to pay if they increase their, if they pass an override. They have additional capacity.
And have they formed an override committee as of yet?
Not yet.
Have they had a Finance Committee meeting to talk about it?
I don't know when their last Finance Committee meeting was.
Right. I mean, these are questions that you need to be asking if you're going to, in fact, have the information you need to represent the taxpayers of Whitman. This is a half a million dollars diverted to the town of Hanson. This is a big deal for the Whitman taxpayers. We're going to tell the fire chief that line item from the fire department is going to be reduced in order for us to fund the fire department in Hanson. I mean, that's what we're talking about. A half a million dollars, we do not have. I just want you to just keep that in your mind as you continue to negotiate for the Board of Selectmen and the town of Whitman. That's all I'm going to say.
Can I weigh in on it, Kyle?
You're my guest.
Okay. Justin, just correct me if I'm wrong. If in fact, we say we decide to go 50-50 this year and then full, full amount next year, that increase, that excess of that $500,000, we pay more, that can never go down, can it?
So actually, I heard today that it can.
It can?
I asked Chris Lynch today if assessments can be decreased from year to year, and it can go down.
It can go down.
The foundation budget cannot, you have to maintain the foundation.
All right, and we're paying.
The foundation budget, correct.
Right. We're paying well over our foundation budget right now.
We are.
Extremely well, though. Right. I find, I, listening to your meetings, I heard the comment that you made as far as, you know, maybe, you know, 50-50, and then we're going to full budget, and then the Chair of the Selectmen of the town of Hanson balked on that. Well, no, we don't want to do that. So it's obvious what they're looking for is to stretch this out for as long as they can. Right? And that's telling me one thing. She, and then she talked about, now I listened to the Selectmen's meeting, they talked about maybe deregalizing, you know, but then they put that on hold because they realized the cost that they really couldn't deregualize. It's, it would be so costly, it would cripple Hanson's budget. That being said, I think Hanson needs to start paying their portion of education, and if it goes to a 1/12 budget, it is not on the town of Whitman. We're paying our full share. It's on the town of Hanson, if that's how they feel about it. And the fact that the superintendent's saying there'll be 40 layoffs in teachers, if we go with last year's budget, that's due to the fact that the teachers are getting their raise, their step raise and their color raise, and they're not foregoing that for the children. Right? That's, that's the only way I can think of. Because if we were going on the same budget as last year, the only increases that there would be in the budget would be like electricity and things like that. But as far as educating the students, it would be the same. They could be the same as last year. So this laying off of 40 positions, I think is only because of the fact that maybe teachers are accepting their raise, and it was negotiated like our fire department, and they should. It's unfortunately that, you know, other people, they're all going to get raised, because I notice in the, even the crossing guards are getting their raise, even though we're paying for it, right? There's 2% in Article 2. I'm just looking at 2% increase for crossing guards.
Just quickly, Chapter 70 is allocated to the amount you can pay. So they got the amount to make them reach. So whatever they're saying about not paying, there's a difference between not being able to pay and not prioritizing. There's a big difference. Because if it was a fact that they couldn't pay, then they need to go back to the state. They need to go back to DOR and say, you know, if this has been miscalculated. And they can correct that with the Department of Revenue. But it is a fallacy. It is not true that they cannot pay. They are not making the commitment that Whitman is. For us to have to, to meet that is crazy. They have to figure out where they grew too much and cut back or do an override. But they, they would, they get the state aid to make it. They do get some state aid to achieve that goal. Now, it's a wonderful thing to be a town that's not getting stated. It means you're growing. You're growing in wealth. It's good. It's not bad. But it means they can afford it. To take a towns that can't, is getting, the amount that we get makes us afford it, so we can't give money over, or we wouldn't get the state aid. We can't afford to do that, or we wouldn't receive the state aid if, it's for a purpose. It's not just mystery money that we can hand over. That's all. I just want that whole, we can't afford it thing, they would get the state aid if they didn't, they couldn't afford it. That's how Chapter 70 is allocated. It's because they can afford it, but they don't get it.
Mr. Chairman, is the Board of Selectmen prepared to make a recommendation on whether to proceed with these negotiations?
Proceed with negotiations towards some kind of a compromise?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
That is.
Well, I'm not going to speak for everybody on the board, but I can speak for most of the people on the board, probably. And I don't think the, I don't think the motivation is there amongst the Board as a whole to go any further with compromise talking.
I would just like to absolutely hold off on a recommendation either way until we actually have something to present to the Board.
Wait a minute, just, just a timeout. Justin, with, we've made a tentative, or there has been a tentative move from Whitman to consider the 50-50 split this year with a proviso that it would go to straight statutory next year. So it'll be a one-year phase in, if you want. And that was made, that was made in good faith, saying that we would, we would consider that. At the last meeting, it seemed like that went nowhere because they appeared to say they understood something else, that, yeah, well, we could do that this year, and then we'll talk about phasing in next year. Well, that was never part of anyone's thought. I was, I was in favor of looking at a 50-50 compromise, if it, even though it meant $500,000 more than we would have to pay under the statutory method in order to get them over this hump. However, after, basically, you were rebuffed at that, at that last meeting by the Chair of the Selectmen in Hanson, saying, well, no, that's not what I had heard, and I'm pretty sure that she had. That did it for me. To me, right now, I'm fully in favor of almost everything, everything that Kathleen, that Kathleen said, what Rich has been talking about, Rosemary's been talking about. I think we need to say, no, it stops here. There have been years when the school committee was supposed to take a vote in order to use the alternate, alternate agreement, if one really existed, and they didn't. And they knew that.
Not my fault.
They know, they know, they know what, they know what they were doing. Somebody knew what they were doing. I think it's, it is time for us to say, I'm sorry, it's a statutory method. Hanson needs to pay a share. Whitman has always come through when the students needed it. And you can just look to recent history. If you look at the SOS project a couple of years ago. Sorry, I'm just getting a phone call about a discount on my electric bill. But anyway, if, if you look back to the SOS project in both towns, and if you look at how each town voted for that override, Whitman came close to passing it. Hanson, nowhere near close to passing it. Sorry, Rosemary, but it didn't. If you look at a few years ago, when we were prepared to do a 5% increase to the schools, Hanson basically said, no, we're going to go 8.5% to 9%. We came up with, as, as Rich had already mentioned, we came up with $600,000 or $800,000 out of other funds so that we could match, match them. We have always come through for the students. And it really hurts me to hear over and over again from the good, and I'm sure they're good people down there. I sound like Trump. The good people down there, when they, when they, when they say that we're, we are the ones that have fault, we're not. And it, I think it has to, we have to sort of draw the line.
I have had an opportunity. I'm from Hanson originally. A lot of the people I love and care for are from Hanson. They're good people, really truly good people that have been heavily misinformed. When I inform people, when I go to church and I talk to the people I know and I hear what they're being told, I understand why they're voting in a way that's harmful to children, because they're being told something different. They're being told that they're paying the right amount, and they're believing, we're lying to them. I am saying that I believe if true leadership comes through over there and they take a stand and tell the truth about what's happening and how that's been hurting children, how it's been preventing us from providing the education these children need, I know the good people of Hanson will stand up and do the right thing. These classroom sizes are large. You know, we are, we have children that have special needs that aren't getting the IEPs that they need. I know the people of Hanson would not agree with that. They're just like the people of Whitman. They're no different. They want the best for their children. It comes down to poor leadership. The lies that were said about deregalizing, well, you know, we should let, we should have let them do the cost analysis and proven that there were millions of dollars that they would have lost and shown with poor leadership, because they knew that before. They've fronted and played games and not been forthcoming with their citizens. They're going to have to be. That's not true about Whitman's, Hanson's citizens. They're good, and I believe if the truth comes out, they'll do the right thing. They care about the children like we do.
No, I can't, I can't disagree with you, Rosemary. You know, I've worked in education and in town government for a very long time, and I have always been a full supporter of the schools to try to get them, to get the children in the schools and the people who work for them as, as much as we possibly can. However. However, this year is, this year has been a year in which I've grown increasingly disappointed. And it probably, it is in the way the messages are, are, are given to the, to the people of Hanson. And I don't want to go through a litany of, of what's, what's going on. But I think it's time, I think it's time for us to, to take that stand and see, see what happens. And hopefully, hopefully, things will change. We've been, we've been victims, if you read the newspapers and all, we've been the victims of fake news from Hanson or for the course of this whole argument. And it's, it's, it's hurtful. The facts have actually been laid out to them on a number of occasions by people like Rick. I know I have said things at, at selectmen's meetings about the history and it doesn't seem to register on the people that speak the loudest. But eventually, things happen.
I've gotten, I've gotten quite a lot of Mr. Young's attacks, but people, I have people I really love. My family's from Hanson. My closest friends are from Hanson and their children's are in the school system. And in the end, what, the, the financial decisions that I want to make are ones that better all of our children and I do the right thing in terms of that without burdening either side more than the other. The state has determined what we can pay and it's given us guidelines that don't burden each of, anyone more than the other. It's under those chapter seventy laws and rules. And if we follow them, we will successfully educate our children without hurting the finances of our communities. I'm sorry that Mr. Young wants to be disingenuous and dishonest, but I still, I still have an obligation to, to care about the people I love and ensure that children get properly educated. Thank you.
Rick, have we exhausted this?
Yeah, I, I would like to move the question, Mr. Chairman, and ask you, in respect, to take a poll of your committee to find out if we're going to end negotiations with the town of Hanson for this matter.
Well, that would, that would mean saying that we're going to absent ourselves from the regional agreement committee?
No, not at all. No, I think it's important that we stay committed to that task. I know I am. But the, this, this part of it is a huge distraction and it is a huge waste of time. And it's also preventing the town of Hanson to do their due diligence and move forward with a financial plan. If, if they still think that there's a knight in shining armor coming over this hill, they're not going to take the steps that are necessary to figure out their difficult financial situation and take some progressive steps to move in the right direction. So if, if we can end their hope that there is a compromise and that the statutory method is the method that the state insists is part of this regional agreement, then it should be in the regional agreement right now. And we should move forward with the other amendments that need to be addressed within this document. So I think it's important if the Board of Selectmen voted simply to end negotiations about a compromise, that's the simple request that I have. I think it'll get a lot of other things moving forward that we need to do. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Justin, do you have anything to say about that?
Just that in, in the last couple of years, the town of Whitman has always come through for the students and, and I can't see this as anything other than punishing the schools for a disagreement with another town.
In other words, you would like to?
I'd like the opportunity to continue and present something to this board before we voted down.
So you're willing to admit that Hanson is willing to punish children because Whitman is funding. Admit that Hanson is threatening to punish children. Leadership in Hanson, if we don't handle, handle a state aid they are not eligible for. Mind you, they are not eligible for this state aid. We are, meaning that we can afford it and they can. If they were eligible, they would have gotten it. And if they couldn't afford it, they would have gotten it. So what you're saying is that they are threatening to underfund our children and their own children not to, not to pay their bills, even though the state has said, yes, you can afford it by how they've allocated it. Is this what you're saying?
I'm saying that, and I'm also saying that us choosing to leave that gap there between what Hanson is willing to pay and what the schools need, we are doing the same thing.
We, we are not doing the same thing. We are funding. We are willing to fund. We are willing to fund appropriately, but there's, we have, we don't have just schools we have to think about. We have police, we have fire, we have elderly we have to think about. To do this, the state has determined the amount of aid so that we can properly balance our budget so that we can afford education, we will have to pull somewhere else. And you've already said, we're taking away the cola. You know something? Cost of living is very important. We saw that when we had the Collins report come in. We were, we were underfunding certain departments. We have to keep up with that so that we can keep our staff on, keep people able to pay their bills throughout this situation. I can't, I can't conscious, with good conscience, hand over money as I ask police officers, as I ask DPW, as I ask the libraries not to take raises. We had a librarian that was twenty dollars an hour less than other, what, other surrounding areas. This is just irresponsibility at its height.
Mr. Hanson has a question.
Yes.
It's, I guess it's more of a comment. You know, I've been patiently listening all night and everybody's made some fantastic points. Kathleen and Rosemary have been right on target, Rick, right on target. If, if the selectmen, remember, we, most of us have been there quite a while, for many years, we took a beating publicly, in the public forum, that we weren't funding education correctly. And black eye after black eye, when all in all, it was the exact opposite. Time and time again, the citizens of Whitman have paid their fair share. The employees of the town of Whitman have done their due diligence and done their fair share at coming together and making these budgets happen time after time after time. How long can Whitman be the punching bag to the benefit of Hanson? At some point, we have to draw a line in the sand. We have to tell the school committee, do your job. Set a budget. Hanson, pay your bills and let's move forward because it's bad enough now with this pandemic we have, but we have to deal with this back and forth tennis matchup, who's the bad guy and who's paying the bill? We know, the state has said what we have to do. Let's all get together, school committee, town of Hanson, town of Whitman, do this, get it done, move forward.
Just quickly, I want to add, we pay on average twenty-four percent above our minimal contribution. The state says to really effectively educate, you want to see twenty-five to thirty percent above minimal contribution. Hanson is paid on average six percent. I emailed a, a selectman that in Hanson that I'm friendly with or I've, I've known in the past, and I asked, how are you determining how you fund education? Because it looks like you're not. It, it looks like that your percentage to your budget is off. I never got a response. I'm sure that he looked into it, but he didn't have a response or he would have sent it back. But the fact of the matter is twenty-four percent and six percent, what does that mean? Right? Because when we clip that together, part of our efforts are spilling over. So the value we pay for education has never been seen. We don't have a partner. As we sit here and talk about great partnerships, I think you should look up the definition of partner. It's a, the, the chapter seventy is the percentage of your income that, that you can afford. Both towns should be paying, what was it? What percentage of the budget did they say in the report? It's equal, I believe. They both should be looking towards that target share. They should, should both be looking at how their money is spent. Hanson must have never looked at how affect, how their money was affecting education, but Whitman was on target every time. We were paying attention to how our money was and we were never seeing that value. Again, we have to use money to service our community. We have a whole spectrum, a large community of elderly, children, working families. We don't, we don't have a half a million dollars to hand over to another town that could, has the money to effectively do this, that doesn't want to make either the ships in their budget or do the override. And that's really the hard choices they're going to have to make. We have, we actually have contracts with Brockton for sewer and water. Are we paying any of Brockton's bills? Does anybody know that? What, what other towns shall we pay? What other bills shall we pay? This responsibility, we are not financially regionalized. They have no access, they should have no access to our finances. We are not financially regionalized. Keep that in mind. It is bizarre to say a town that receives state aid because they can't afford it should give that state, give money to a town that does not receive city because they can't afford education. It, it just makes it so that we can't afford it even more, that we're cutting, we're, we're not spending somewhere else. We're not. We have buildings that are falling down. We have asbestos in Town Hall. We, because we've delayed a lot of these fixings, it's going to get more expensive. We've got, what, we have generators that we don't even have for our schools, but Hanson has them for their schools. It doesn't make sense. It's not, it's not sound.
Well, Brian, Rick has asked for a, the selectmen, Rick has asked for, to get a vote by the selectmen on whether or not they want to reaffirm that they want to use the full, the full statutory method, not only starting this year with this next fiscal year. That's the, the sense of your, your request, correct, Rick?
That is, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
That, that puts it a little bit differently from saying, no, we don't want to compromise anymore. Or don't want to talk to you anymore.
That effectively does the same thing, yes.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had, we had, months ago, we had asked the, the school committee to, we had shown our favor for the statutory method and the school committee actually voted to use it this year. So you're actually, actually asking us to reaffirm our faith in using the statutory method starting this year. I know this puts you in a difficult position, Justin, and I, I'm loath to do that actually. But I, I think from listening to other people on the, on the selectmen speak and the conversations I've had, I think the selectmen as a whole are going to, are going to vote this way. But if someone would like to put that motion to reaffirm our commitment to using the full statutory method this year, I'd accept that motion.
I'll make that motion, Dan Salbucci.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Carl.
Okay, there's a second. Is there discussion amongst the selectmen on this motion? On, Justin?
I, I still just think that this is, is too soon to take this vote when the potential deal on the table is that we'll go full statutory next year and make half of the shift this year, fully fund the budget and get four teachers for equity between the Whitman and Hanson Elementary Schools.
Okay, I have a question for Justin on that point. Justin, would, if that's the case, would Hanson reimburse us?
They would not.
So why would we do it? You want to, you want to pay my taxes on my house, Justin?
The, the reason to do it is that, is that it'd be the second consecutive year of layoffs in the schools and I think it would take longer to rebuild than it would be to, to pony up this year.
Well, then if the school teachers didn't take an increase, they wouldn't. It would be the same as last year.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Justin, when you and I talked earlier, I was willing to go along with that. But then last week, they, they pulled back the idea of going to full statutory next year automatically and that, that kind of turned the corner for me. I also wanted something else for them, too. I wanted Hanson to admit that for a number of years, we have been subsidizing the town of Hanson as far as the education of our kids is concerned, to the tune of a number of millions of dollars, and we have done that. I'd like to, you know, I, one of the things I'd like to see in, I'd like to see in some sort of an agreement is their, their admission that it's been, it's been like that for a number of years. Yes, Randy?
Where to start? First of all, I, I absolutely agree with Kathleen, everything she said. It is clear that if you followed this at all, the problem we have with the edu, educational system in, in the district itself is because of the, where we sit above MLC and where Hanson sits. In that gap is where our problem lies. It needs to be corrected. I think we've all, you know, beat this to death that this is the way it gets corrected. To, the problem I, I have with some of the, the direction this, some of this has gone tonight is I think we are casting blame in the wrong direction. It is not the people of Hanson that caused this problem that are to blame for this problem. If you really want to know who's the blame for this issue, it is to go and look at the administration, the previous administration specifically. And if you want to get evidence of that, I would recommend that anyone goes back, they're online now, and just view the 2017 Regional Agreement Committee meetings. It is clear, it is evident, they were called in, even a statement that gentleman from Mars makes on April 22nd, he says, we were called out here originally to fix the assessment issue. That tells you something. The administration at that time, more than likely due to a citizen bringing this to light in 2016, realized they had a problem. They swept it under the rug. Now, I cannot blame Hanson for that. I cannot blame the, the citizens of Hanson for that. So how do we get around that? And there's numerous people that sit on the Board of Selectmen now that were not part of that. I think by making this vote, we have to, by making a vote like this, Hanson can discuss it. The vote, we, we are sending our, you've got to be very clear that we're sending our school budget to a 112 method. That's what this, and I am not speaking out against it. Would I be someone, probably would advocate for, to try and work this in on a one-year deal to avoid a 112? Yes. But if we make this mo, motion now and, and vote this where there's absolutely zero wiggle room, we've, we've all but decided where the school budget's going. Now, Carl, you make good points. I've been on the board. I, I've argued at times and I've been there when Brian made the, you know, the motion and, and we went above and beyond and we took out a stabilization. I, I've, I've said to people who have been in these meetings, there should be three questions asked. When Hanson finally gives a number, makes the, makes a legitimate proposal, three questions should be asked. How do you get to that number? Are you taking out a stabilization? Are you using free cash? Are you making budget cuts? My concern lies is if they can answer yes to that and we're a little bit shy, we, we force this 112 budget. I am all for sticking the statutory. I think I was one of the first persons that, that actually brought it up. I believe in it. I think it ultimately corrects the issues in our district. I just don't know if we, we actually need to make this vote. And, and Hanson and Justin. Are there other avenues of bargaining? I don't know. I mean, if you were to pressure me right now, I would be in agreement with this board, well, the majority probably of this board. There's something to think about, that more than likely this vote right now sends the school to a 112 budget guarantee.
I, I just think that this is.
Thank you, Randy.
I just think that, again, a lot of the people that are speaking on this, that are on these committees were well aware prior to and allowed for a budget that was illegally, was illegal to go through this year and lost a million and a half for Whitman voters. That means it was taken away, we were asking police and fire to make cuts. They allowed it to go over. And I already, I, I really comfortable about those same people on those committees now making the decisions after they have failed the Whitman people for over four years. You're right. Whitman citizen has said to me, they waived the school in 2007, that same Whitman citizen sits on that committee board now. That same Whitman citizen, Mr. Lamatina.
Point of order. It's not 2007. Point of order. It's not 2007. She's talking about Christopher George, it's 2016. He sent an email, this has been confirmed. He sent an email to the superintendent, it's public record, he brings this to light.
This is not getting us anywhere.
Yes, it, yes, it does. It does. Because the Whitman voters were.
Because the Whitman voters were not given the right-
Point of order, move the vote.
This is, no. The Whitman voters shouldn't have been given this budget.
What's the point of order, Randy?
To, to move the vote, and the speaker's not acknowledged by the chair.
No.
I'll, I'll acknowledge Justin. Go ahead, Justin.
I, I would just like to ask, um, if we'd consider withdrawing this motion, and then is there any other input from the other selectmen that you'd like me to take back to this committee? If, if there were a potential for something else this year?
Dan, are you, are you willing to, uh, unmove it?
Nope.
You made the motion. Well, thanks a lot, Dan.
And I was, no, I'm not, no. Because if, I'm sorry, Justin. The handwriting's clear, they, they do not want to make any adjustment. They want to go half this year, maybe 25, whatever it is. The fuck is, Hanson, who says they can't afford it? How do you know they can't afford it? Because of the board of selectmen? We don't know that.
Carl, I do have a question.
Yeah, yeah, Brian.
Um, to Justin's point, I, I, I truly believe you being sincere, worrying about the, the, the region and children and, and the whole package, and, uh, it's justifiable. Um, however, with this, um, all of employees in Whitman getting no raises at all, if we went further with this vote, would it behoove the superintendent, the school committee, to go to the teachers' union and say, "You can save jobs by taking a zero and pushing your contract out one year, and therefore using that money to help balance that budget if we take this vote because of Hanson's inability to do the right thing?"
Brian, we don't, we don't know that they're not doing that now.
Right, well, that's a suggestion.
You can put the suggestion out there that if they haven't considered, uh, utilizing, uh, negotiations to perhaps, uh, establish a, a one-year freeze, maybe that would be an appropriate action, but it would be up to them-
Right.
-to take that step if they haven't already.
That would be an appropriate thing for me to take back to them. Uh, there are any other suggestions?
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Um, and we're gonna, we're ready to vote on it unless anyone else has anything they'd like to say. Okay, and basically what the motion is doing is it's telling Justin to go back to that committee and say that his lips are sealed, and there's no, no longer gonna be any, any movement on the part of, um, the Whitman hit, him as a Whitman representative from the selectmen, to, um, go for a, a compromise for this year. Said, is everybody clear what the motion is about? That we send Justin to the meeting saying, "Sorry, there's no compromise in Whitman this year. Let's get on to the rest of the business about the regionalization committee." Does that make sense to anybody?
Yeah.
Who has a question?
Me, Ralph Mitchell, I have a question. I know, I've been sitting here and listening to all the commentation going back and forth. I do agree with a lot with what has been said, especially what, uh, Kathleen has said. But now, here it is, it's still, look at the fact that we have spent, as a Whitman citizen and taxpayer, we've spent a lot of our money to support Hanson. Now, obviously, they're gonna try to avoid the issue, and we've been arguing among ourselves, but what do you think of the idea of us as a, as a town filing a lawsuit to try to recover some of all this money that's been spent? It would sure help our budget.
Well, actually, that, that doesn't, that's not part of the discussion we're having right now. Right now, we're having a discussion about what the, what the Whitman selectmen are gonna, um, say to Justin to bring back to the agreement committee.
Right.
So that, what, what you're talking about is interesting, but it's not what-
That's all, as a possibility.
Okay, there, as far as the selectmen is concerned, are concerned, is there anybody who wants to say anything else? Justin?
I'll just, um, sort of related to Brian's point. Uh, Frank, did anyone from the schools reach out to you, um, that they were undergoing any collective bargaining? I don't know if you could even say, but, but under 603 CMR 41, they are supposed to notify the selectmen of both towns.
As of this point, no.
Okay.
Okay, hearing, hearing nothing further, uh, the, the motion on the floor is to, for us to, um, basically direct our representative, Justin, to that committee to announce to the, uh, to the Regional Agreement Committee that, uh, Whitman is sticking, uh, for the, is, is supporting a straight statutory method, not only next year, but this, uh, starting this year, and that we're not in, interested in any compromises. And that's the motion on the floor. That that's Randy's, that's Justin's message back to the committee. Ask one member of that committee from, from board. Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Randy?
Yes.
Voting yes, okay. Uh, Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'm afraid I'm gonna have to vote yes, too. Um, so it's four to one. You can take that message back, that we've had this discussion, the heated discussion, um, with the finance committee, and it appears as if almost everybody in the room is, is not willing for Whitman to compromise this year.
Carl, I would like to, um, commend, uh, Justin for his efforts because that's probably not an easy job, to have to go through this back and forth.
Well, I came really close to, to voting with him, but it wouldn't have made any difference.
So I appreciate, I, uh, I understand the passion.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, Rick?
Yes, I-
How much more of your agenda do you wanna deal with, Rick?
Well, um, I would, I would also like to recognize the efforts of Justin, and, you know, it is a difficult position to be in, so. But, um, just moving on to the next topic, we're talking, if we can, just a little bit about, uh, the policy, um, strategic planning and sustainability. So these are, you know, three, three things that are, you know, very comprehensive in each one. Uh, but I think, you know, to get a sense of the, the board of selectmen and the finance committee, I, I think we've demonstrated this year that we're working towards those goals. I, you know, and I, and I would certainly open it for discussion for any specific, um, policy or strategic planning initiative that has been implemented, that's gonna get us forward. And, and I'll just, just outline, uh, the fact that we ha, hired the consultant. Um, and I think throughout this budget cycle, we've demonstrated that we've started deviate from some aspects of the recommendations, and actually, as a committee, we've moved ourselves back towards those recommendations. So, um, you know, the very, one of the most difficult decisions, obviously, is the, the, um, the ambulance revolving account, you know? The fire chief, obviously, was a very difficult decision to accept the dissolution of that, uh, the, of that, uh, that account. Um, but again, looking progressively at utilizing the receipts of the ambulances to, to have all departments access capital needs for each one of their departments. And, but still maintain the fact that, um, that particular, we were gonna create a new account that's specific to the purchase of ambulance. So, uh, like I said, i- at one point, there was a little bit of a, um, discussion about changing or modifying the language, but I think we stayed the course for this, for this specific issue as a good example of how we have to move forward with, with our policy in order to get to where we need to be. So, uh, that's just one example, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Rick, yeah, I, I had asked Frank, um, either today or yesterday, I forget which now, that all the days are pouring together, about whether or not this, um, this particular budget cycle was using the advice of, um, the committee that Randy chaired, um, is chaired, uh, as far as finances was concerned, and he said he thought that it was. Um, and so I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm hoping you're confirming that now.
Yes, I, I am.
And I think that all, all of that work that was done, uh, put together with what the Collins Report suggests, um, needs to be put in some sort of a, of a planning for, for a sustainability, um, document. And I, I think, if I can remember correctly, in Article 2, the selectmen are asking for, uh, a small amount of money to hire a consultant to help us with the writing of that. But I, I, I see that plan actually having been almost written already because of some, because of the work of the Collins Group, and because of work of, um, the, uh, the possible override committee, um, which did a lot of great work.
Absolutely, yep, yep, I definitely concur. And I think that the, um, the capital committee has already put in motion plans to move forward with the capital, uh, capital improvement plan, too. So, I mean, those discussions are gonna happen right on the heels of town meeting. There's a lot of work to be done, and I think, uh, you know, an outline has already been drafted. Dave, you wanna talk a little bit about the direction of the committee for the capital aspect?
Yeah, uh, when we reconvened the budget year and regrouped, uh, we set to, uh, in motion, uh, two paths. Um, one path was to review capital warrants, make our recommendations, uh, to the board of selectmen. And two, and the second path was to, uh, commence with the, uh, capital improvement plan with that the town of, town meeting approved in, I think it was 2016, where, uh, it commissioned that, uh, it commissioned that committee to, uh, develop a plan in, in order to better main, uh, better manage, uh, capital and capital needs. Uh, so right now, uh, we've been focusing on the budget. Uh, so we're focusing on warrant articles, and I'm currently drafting, um, a communication to department, department heads that, uh, for information, much of which has already been compiled by the Collins Center.
And one of the highlights, I think, um, of the, uh, the committee that was developed for the evaluation of an override, one of the statements that came out of that was, what our weakness, what our weakness was. And, and it was, quote, "Discipline and policy," end quote. And I think we are working cohesively, I think, with the, the three, uh, you know, the capital committee, the, uh, board of selectmen, and the finance committee to create that discipline and create that policy. And I think it's really gonna have some, some really tangible benefits in the, in the coming years because we still face a very difficult budget year next year. And so that discipline and policy is what's gonna carry us through.
Thank, thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Dave, for that, uh, outline.
Now, what about the rest of your agenda?
Uh, the only other thing, uh, we're, uh, we talked a little bit about the COVID-19 revenue impact when we did the revenue forecasting, so I think we really covered that. The only other item, uh, was, was talking about the district, and I know we spent quite a lot of time on the district, uh, already, Mr. Chairman. But I think you perhaps saw a, a, a proposal, uh, from Don Byers regarding the non-manded, mandated busing.
Right.
And maybe, uh, you know, some type of an approach that could be phased. Um, I think she, she did an extraordinary good job outlining, um, how, uh, the initial, um, phase would not cost anything. Um, would simply be for parents who are driving their students, who are, who we're paying for a bus for, simply to say, "We are not gonna utilize the service of the bus" and get a count and perhaps, you know, initially save money right out of the, right out of the gate without implementing anything. But, you know, i- this is a difficult subject, and I know we battered it around for a while, but, you know, we really have to look at ways to, uh, create revenue that, you know, in the past, we have, we have vehemently avoided. So I think this is one of those, uh, things that, you know, we could work with the district. I think, uh, now that Justin has opened a pretty good dialogue with the district, um, you know, to move forward some, some, some plans that are gonna be beneficial to them.
Yeah, and we just tonight helped Justin a lot in, in furthering those conversations.
But I, but I think, again, we need to keep a dialogue open with the district to create revenue sources that we don't have currently.
I think when this, when this-
With more limited amount of resources for the district, we have to look at, at a pay-to-ride program as, as one of the vehicles that we could use to increase-
One of the, one, this, this point was brought up at one of our meetings recently, and, and Randy made a good point at the time. He said, "This might be a very bad time to, to take away, um, from somebody who's been laid off from work, somebody who's been sick, somebody who's been going through the same COVID-19 mo, business as everyone else, to take this away from them at this particular time." And that's something that we have to, that's something we have to consider, too.
Absolutely. I mean, any, any decision we make, or any policy, or anything we look at, obviously, we have to take into look, and, and look at the hardship issues that are gonna be generated. There's no doubt about it, you know, there, that's something we have to consider. So, we will take it.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else, Rick?
Um, no, I think, um, that, that, that exhausts the agenda that I prepared, and basically, these were suggestions from our roundtable discussion at last week's finance committee, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, you guys are going to another meeting. You, you guys are still going to another meeting, correct?
Yeah, we, yeah.
So somehow, this, this board here is gonna change.
Yes.
Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion for the finance committee? Can I make a motion that we do not reconvene in a second meeting, considering it's after nine now?
Oh, easy for you to say, John.
I second that, John.
I'm all for that.
I got a second. I got a second.
I, I second that, John.
You can have a third.
All right, we'll have to do a roll call, then. Uh, John?
Uh, yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chop?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes, sir.
And I vote yes as well. So, thank you again, um, Mr. Chairman and the board of selectmen for a very thoughtful and engaging meeting. I think they've earned a lot of ground.
Thank you, thank you also, and, and the, the total finance committee. And now, um, erase yourselves from the board, and we'll get on with what we have to do next.
Thank you.
You guys have fun.
Bye, have a great day.
Night, Ryan.
Night.
We don't care where you go, but you can't stay here.
I think it ought to stay.
Okay, now, so who is gonna be managing this meeting?
Uh, so John has left me as a host as well.
John has left you as a host?
But if, if they're not reconvening, it looks like he may stay on.
Okay, so we're just, we're on?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Town Administrator's report, update on COVID-19, Frank?
Okay, um, needless to say, we continue to bear with the various guidelines that are being presented to us today, or yesterday, actually. A question came up about, uh, employees who are working on alternate schedules being brought back in to work together. Um, I did send an email to the department managers and copied the board of selectmen in it. I stated that so long as we can ensure social distancing in safe environments, certainly, we can bring, uh, more of the staff back to work on a, uh, regular work week basis. And, uh, I have to see how that goes over the next few days, who is looking to make what adjustments. And, uh, I think at the same time, we're not, I don't think we're going to know anything in terms of how this, uh, process goes till we see what happens publicly over the next few weeks as more and more people return to the open market, whether there's a resurgence in infections or other things. Uh, we already talked about the costs that, um, impacts we're incurring as a result of the COVID virus, and, uh, later in the agenda, we'll talk about some options for meeting.
Okay, does anyone have any questions, Frank? Next item on the agenda is to consider a vote to extend the deadline for applications for tax exemptions and deferrals under Mass General Law, Chapter 59. Frank?
In our previous meeting, we voted to waive interest and charges for certain bills. This provision, uh, allows the successor to accept applications for hardship and other exemptions as they're laid out in the statute, um, up until- as they're laid out in the statute up until June 1st. And I am recommending that the board adopt this to provide some opportunity for people who may have been aced out of it by COVID-19.
Is there a motion to do so?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Dan.
Is there a second? Brian will second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Postpone Memorial Day Parade, Frank?
I think that's more of a statement than a question. I don't see any way we can do it. So, what I'd like to do is ask that the board take a vote to postpone the Memorial Day Parade, whether we can pick it up later or perhaps combine it with some other celebration or recognition, either thinking real aggressively in the Fourth of July, or more likely in the November Veterans Day Parade, maybe participate at that point.
Well, Frank, if we stay six feet apart, it'll be the longest parade Whitman's ever had.
Only allow 10 people, Dan.
Bear in mind, our entire town hall, including the seating area and the auditorium and the balcony and the stage, would allow us 100 people.
Okay, that's actually dealing with an item further on down the line, Frank. Postpone Memorial Day Parade. Is there a motion to postpone it? Does anyone want to make a date to postpone? No, we can't make a date to postpone it. It'll be postponed indefinitely. Brian, second it?
Second, yeah.
Okay, any discussion?
So, are we canceling it?
We canceling it or postponing it?
We're canceling the Memorial Day Parade, but not necessarily the celebration.
We may have another parade.
And we'll have to call it something else, like the post-Memorial Day Parade.
Yes.
All right, so we're canceling the parade. That's the motion, Dan, that's the motion you're making? Dan?
Cancel it?
Come on, Dan.
No, I'd rather just postpone it. I'll make a motion.
Tomato, tomato.
If we don't have a Memorial Day Parade on Memorial Day, it's considered canceled.
Okay, motion to cancel it.
And I'll second.
Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad you guys are making that motion and not myself. Any discussion on Dan's proposal to cancel Memorial Day? Okay. Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Okay, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll vote yes as well.
Counties have already done.
Did they postpone or cancel?
Cancelled.
COVID funding for Plymouth County, Frank? Frank?
Plymouth County has placed itself to be the recipient of $90 million in COVID aid that is to be distributed across a broad range of programs and operations. There has been significant pushback from leaders in towns within the county to encourage Plymouth County to assign responsibility to the A&amp;F Department of the State because of the complexity of administering the program and the aid. One of the biggest factors that are driving this is if the distribution funds is not done in accordance with the guidelines and regulation of the federal government, those funds are subject to reinsurance. And I don't think any town wants to be in the position of coughing up money because a mistake was made, even inadvertently. The Mayor of Brockton and the Town Manager of Plymouth sent a letter to the Plymouth County Commission requesting that he and the committee assign those responsibilities to the state. I'm not aware of any movement at this point, but I will keep you posted on that process.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Justin?
Would it be appropriate for us to sign on to a letter or draft our own, recommending the same thing?
We could, if that's the pleasure of the board.
May I speak on that?
Would you like to make a motion so you can speak?
No, I just want to speak on it, since I'm on the board.
All right.
Advisory Board. I was, I attended that meeting online, and the reason that you have Brockton and Plymouth, the one large city and the largest town, wanting the state to deal with it, I think it's self-serving. I think our commissioners, they hired some people to get the job done, the job done correctly, and I think they'll be able to administer it correctly. I mean, if you mix it in with the state's money, how do you know we're going to get it? It's actually $90,907,000. I mean, I just, I just don't trust the state to appropriate the money properly to Plymouth County. The commissioners know Plymouth County. So, I would not recommend sending a letter and siding with Plymouth and Brockton.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Brian?
Yeah, I would concur with Dan because the state has proven time and time again not to be trusted in anything that regards to money. They always find a way to divert and camouflage ways of spending money that was for something else and put it in a pet project or whatever. So, I'm not in favor of handing one red cent over to the state from the county.
Anybody else? Justin?
Do we know roughly what the budget for the Plymouth County Commissioners is every year? This seems like a large sum of money that they're not typically in charge of.
You know, I probably do have that somewhere. It is a large sum of money that they're not typically required to handle. And it is, for lack of a better description, a part-time board in an environment where full-time administration may be necessary for the fund. And the rules specifically prohibit the recipients from paying any administrative fees out of $80 million. So, anything that's done has to be done at the expense of the county. So, there, I don't have an exact count, but I last looked, I think there were 16 communities in Plymouth County on a listserv that I belong to that have expressed their desire to have the money go to the state. I hadn't really expected a vote on this tonight. I just wanted to have everyone aware of the circumstances that are associated with it. But I'm just trying to get into the computer, see what their budget is.
Frank, what do you mean 16 communities? Not 16 communities of Plymouth County.
Huh?
You're not saying 16 communities of Plymouth County?
Yes, I am.
Are saying that they would prefer it to go to the state?
Yes.
That is not what was, no one actually said that at our meeting.
I actually have the list, and I'll email it to you.
Okay, I'm quite surprised at that because the state, like, when Plymouth County took over, when the state took over the Plymouth County prison, they took over all the revenues and left us with the expenses. That's what the state did until we fought them on it, and now they have that. They wouldn't pay, right, the state wouldn't pay their rent for the courthouses until we threatened to close them. I mean, no.
Dan, what is the Plymouth County budget?
Oh, I don't, you would have to ask me that. I have the book in the other room. I'm not too sure.
Is this something we need, is this a kind of a letter, a supporting letter that we need to send immediately?
No, we can
Why don't we?
Act on that tonight.
Why don't we, why don't we?
I'll get more information.
Yeah, why don't we talk about it again at our next meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, just if I can just add one thing super quick. I believe the county is actually making a recommendation to give it to the state because of they're better equipped to deal with that large amount of money.
Not the county commissioners.
Not the commissioners.
We didn't, the county assigned, to be clear, we recommend the county assign responsibility, signed by Michael Heffernan.
That's the Charlie Baker's administration. Yeah.
And I think there's going to be a vote with the advisory board on this matter to maybe overturn the county commissioner's decision.
Yeah, why don't we hold off then? Frank, if you can get that list of 16 other towns that
I will.
are signing in, get us a little more information.
Sure.
Is that okay, Justin, to put it off? Okay, thank you. Regional Agreement Amendment Committee report?
I think we'd do that.
Anyone want to talk about that anymore?
Now, do we have the resend the vote?
Yes.
All right.
Actually, it's someone who votes in favor of it, someone who votes in favor on it wants to say, "Let's reconsider it." That can happen. You being funny, Randy?
I'm getting a little
Nervous.
testy from staring at the screen.
At any time, at any time before this meeting is over, if somebody wants to reconsider that vote, we can reconsider it. Somebody that voted in favor. That means everybody but Justin. You're off the hook on that one, Justin. You're on the hook for everything, you're obviously on the hook for everything else. Okay, discuss 711, 634 Washington Street and Quality Fuel, 180 South Avenue, receiving a Keno monitor. Doesn't require a vote unless there's an objection. Does anyone object?
No.
Monitors at those places?
No.
No, 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 okay, fine. Take action to rescind the Class II Auto Dealers License for JP Incorporated doing business at Star Auto Sales and Service on the premises located at 470 Temple Street. The licensee is no longer conducting business at this location.
He's going, I'll make that motion, Dan.
Is there a second? And this is just to rescind the license for that location?
Yeah, he moved.
Because they're moving. There's no discussion?
Pardon? They already moved.
Okay, if there's, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
All business. Further extension to town meeting. We haven't really set a date. Well, we did, we set a date for June 3rd, I think.
Actually, I don't think we ever voted it.
Why don't we vote a date for town meeting?
And the decision would have been invalid because the meeting had not yet been posted at that point. So
What had not been posted?
The notice of meeting. I had counsel further review it, and the moderator can only reschedule the meeting once it's posted.
Oh.
Posted, it was the decision of the Board of Selectmen to set a date, which it still is at this point. The reason I put this on is I reached out to the superintendent of schools to see if it might be possible for us to hold our meeting either at the gymnasium or the Performing Arts Center in order to hold a meeting where we can safely social distance. The only wrinkle with that, the school is in, and state law requires that meeting be held in Whitman. I would argue that the mailing address of the school is 600 Franklin Street, Whitman. So, I asked our counsel to look at that and give us an opinion. And then, yesterday, Senate Bill 2680 was filed, which if approved, and it looks like it will be, will allow us to hold a meeting outside the town borders. So, looking at it either way, it's likely we're going to be able to do that. So, with that in mind, I wondered if we might consider when we would hold a town meeting.
Okay, do you have a suggestion? Anyone have a suggestion?
I would say the later the better.
Latest, knowing that we might even have to postpone it again.
Right, June 29th.
I know that this sounds a little silly, but that is the week leading into the Fourth of July, not that it matters much technically.
Yeah, I don't see a lot of people running up to the main since they said they have to stay two weeks if they get
Isn't the first article to call for an election?
Yeah.
That would be calling for an election two days ago.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's more academic because the bylaw already provides for that election.
All right.
And we have scheduled it.
What about the 22nd?
That would work.
Sounds reasonable to me.
It's Monday, I think that's a Monday, right? Monday, the 22nd?
Yeah.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion that we move it to June 22nd?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Okay, I'll vote yes.
Now, this is where, if for some reason we have to change it, it now would require the moderator to make a change in the date.
And are you saying we can have it at the high school?
The superintendent has agreed to make the facility available to us.
We don't know, we don't know yet how much room there is at the high school, do we?
Well
To accommodate, how many people they can accommodate, six feet apart.
Right, that's the next thing we have to figure out. I told Jeff, as soon as we made a determination, I would get together with him and figure that out.
Can I make a statement, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One of the things that was published on several TV stations last week was that the opinion was that on May 18th, the governor, going through the summer, was going to put a limit of 50 people on a group up from 10. Now, obviously, he hasn't done that. Would that apply to the town meeting if the governor says only 50 people are allowed to gather at any place, even if they're socially distanced?
You know, that's a good question.
I believe not because it involves voting rights. We have to provide voters with a notice to register for that meeting 20 days in advance of the meeting. And the state is pretty adamant about not depriving of the right to vote. So, it really are conflicting issues that have to be addressed.
I'm not saying it's going to happen, but it was on like three different TV stations last week that that was kind of what they were hearing going through this, that there'd be a limit of 50. But until Mr. Baker says it, then.
But that doesn't apply to governmental meetings either. I'm pretty sure it doesn't. We'll find out.
Okay, but right now, if we can, we're going to have it on the 22nd. John, that was a good point. The reason to, the reason for putting the extension out for town meeting is because we're concerned about people spreading disease. And that, putting, you know, putting 100 to 150 people in a room isn't going to do that. I mean, it isn't going to help that. The next item on the agenda is funding for the feasibility study for the Whitman Middle School. We talked about that, we talked about that a little bit already, Dan. Didn't we? Talk about it. As we were going through Article 2, okay? Yes?
There was some discussion from the Hanson folks about deregionalizing.
What does this have to do with the feasibility study for the Whitman Middle School?
I'm getting there. The, my thought process is on the feasibility study for middle school. Maybe we should include it to be a senior junior high school feasibility study in the event that there be some deregionalization going, and we have a appropriate plan in place to see where we're going to go if such thing happens.
Brian, the only challenge with that is when we go out to bid for the feasibility study, what you're essentially divining is two separate feasibility studies. The middle school, which has a certain number of students, one for a junior, senior high school, which has a different number of students than a which has a different number of students and a completely different design. I like the idea, I just don't think it's practical.
Okay, I just figured I'd throw it out there as a, uh, you know, an emergency plan in case things, uh, go south.
Yeah, actually, I've thought about that myself when I, when I considered the, the threat to deregionalize, that we're in a position now where we have to replace a building. And so if we were, if we were to replace that building with something that could handle both middle schoolers and high schoolers, it would work out. But, uh, I, I understand what Frank's saying too.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Then we should probably get some type of, uh, we, we may have to switch gears with this, this study then because I, I think we probably are close, a lot closer to that deregionalization talk than we were when we started this meeting and it's a possibility, and I would hate to have that happen a year from now.
Exactly.
That's one of the many reasons I approached the MSB to see if we could get a permissive delay to move forward with this, and they said, sorry, there's no thought, there's no thought of doing that.
You know, you, you would, I guess at one point, you know, goodwill, I guess, works both ways, right? And I would hate to be caught in a situation
Right.
that, that we end up stuck. So
Well, in the light
Valid point, Brian, and I, like I said, and I'm, I'm not making light of the situation, but uh, I tried to be clear when we made that vote that I, I think we drew, drew a line in the sand tonight.
Yeah, I agree.
And principally, and I don't want to go back into this, I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't be if I'm off topic, Mr. Chairman, but by principle, I think we're, we're absolutely right. Is this one of those things where we bit off our nose despite our face, so?
We still have, we still have time to reconsider the vote if, if anybody to do that.
Bear in mind, there's also the potential, or a return to the pre-concurrence where we have a regional high school in a, um, individual
Case of waste.
K through eight. The problem with that is it's even more costly because now you're doubling up administrations. You're going from one administration to three.
But they don't have to be really expensive administrations either, Frank.
That's true.
Justin?
Randy, myself and Frank sat in on a meeting with a couple of representatives from Mars, uh, where they actually talked about deregionalization at length. And one of the things that they emphasized, just to calm some people out there, one of the things they emphasized early on was that you would immediately be throwing away four and a half million dollars and hold harmless chapter seventy money, plus a million dollars in regional transportation, which five million dollars is ten percent of the school budget, that we would, they would cast away. Both towns would have to add administrations and presumably schools. Um, it, it's not a simple task to deregionalize.
And it also take, it also takes a while, right?
Three to four years was the estimate.
Yeah.
And then that's, it, it was, that was a fairly lengthy discussion and, I mean, it's by no means where, and I don't think either town wants to go. It's costly, it's going, it would be a long process. And not to beat a dead horse, and this is why we are
Can I speak on that?
Hold just one second then. And, and I think there was a lot of negativity this evening cast at the wrong group of people. And it, it really frustrated me, and I probably should have spoke up then, but I didn't, but I have literally watched, and, and if they're still watching this meeting, I would highly recommend, if you want to see why we're in this process, how we got here, go back, they're on YouTube, watch the regional agreement committee meetings. They were there for a purpose. The administration at that time knew there was an issue. They did not tell the towns. Plain and simple. So to now paint the town of Hanson as our enemy is just wrong, and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
Right, okay, as far as deregionalizing, it's, the Board of Selectmen are the ones that made the suggestion. It's town meeting that has to vote it. They can make all the suggestions they want. If the people of Hanson do not want to deregionalize, it's not going to happen. I know it took Pembroke years before they could get that, make that happen through Silver Lake.
We were told it's a three to four year process.
Oh, yeah.
You have to, there is a lot of financial variables to look at, OPEB, there, there was even some discussion with the size of each one of our, um, student population, if that's even possible. There is some, if you're less than X amount of students, they may not even let you deregionalize.
Right.
It, it's a scary conversation, and I think that is what, when you talk about compromise, those are the things you're trying to avoid. And I think we're a hundred percent right. I, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure I was the guy that brought the statutory method to our board. I, I believe in it one hundred percent. We need to get there. I just don't know if it's is it worth ruining the, destroying the partnership in the region to do it, so?
I think the part, no, I don't think so. I think the partnership is between the select, the town, the townspeople of Whitman and the townspeople of Hanson, uh, not through the boards of selectmen, and I think the Board of Selectmen of Hanson just fired a shot over the bow because of the fact that they were uncomfortable with not getting the way they, what they wanted. It was obvious the last meeting when they balked at fifty cent this and then full them out next year, they balked at it instantly.
Dan, obviously, you know I was torn on that vote.
I know, I, I understand it.
I will tell you why I voted like that. Because to make a, an, an offer of what you're going, knowing the situation, to, I reached out to Frank, it was the last Monday, Frank, and asked him to confirm what the Hanson number was. And I'm sorry, an offer of ten point three million dollars as we get into the first week in May, it, it, it just, to me, didn't seem real. It, it's not real. They needed to provide more. They should have, this is crunch time. My vote came tonight because we need a, a, a path forward. And yes, I agree. I don't want to say charade, I think that's harsh, but you know, we're in the fourth quarter of the game, and to still be not even presenting a realistic number is more that makes me justify my vote.
Yep. Well, in, in point of fact, it's what, May?
Fifth.
Cinco de Mayo.
We're not going to have a budget in fifty days. It's, there won't be a school budget in fifty days. So we're heading to a one twelfth budget. If we have a way to keep the door open to discussions with Hanson, I think it's to our mutual benefit, like, you know, we have to somehow convey to them and get the leadership in Hanson to understand why this issue is what it is. And it isn't the dollars. It ends up in the dollars. But it's the fact that there's a formula and a way fund, and we're not doing it right. And rather than acknowledge that and sit down and talk about it, the defenses know we're going to do it the way we have been. So if there's an opportunity for us to work with them to break down that barrier, I'd like to take it rather than just throw the gauntlet down and say, cross line.
I'm not sure exactly what you're saying, Frank.
I'm saying we should not close our avenues of discussion. As much as I think we need to be at a, um, at a, uh, statutory assessment next year, I don't know that we couldn't come up with something that gets us there with maybe some concession that isn't part of the funding piece.
Frank, Frank, didn't you think that the chairman of the Board of Hanson did that with her answer to Justin at their last meeting?
Yes, but that's one person, Dan.
Well, she spoke for her board.
And our, and our board just spoke for its board too, but it's not just one person doing the speech.
Right, exactly. But the fact is, we had five people making the decision. But she balked.
That's right, and a couple of people are just talking about whether or not that decision was really a fruitful one.
Well, she, she put the handwriting on the wall as far as I'm concerned.
I, I, I mean, the, the problem I guess I have fundamentally with voting not to have a conversation with people is at the end of the day, anything that came out of that ultimately comes back here. I mean, we're voting no on hypotheticals. And I certainly would not go beyond a, but you don't know, and I think by this vote, we have had it, in my opinion, have guaranteed that sorry, the connection's unstable there. All guaranteed one twelfth, and did we make a vote that there's just no more bargaining? I don't know, I, I have a problem throwing away bargaining rights when at the end of those rights, you make the vote on what you were discussing. So
Well, I, I see Randy is torn there, but he's not willing to make the motion to reconsider. Um, I'll pass the, I'll pass the gavel. I'll pass the gavel to Dan, and I'll make a motion to reconsider the vote. There a second?
Second.
Who seconded that?
Randy.
Randy did, okay. Any discussion on reconsidering the vote? And all, all this would do? Well, I, let's make it a little bit more complicated. Yeah, reconsider the vote, and what, what I would replace it with is the, uh, is the, the board's willingness to continue discussions about how this year is funded, but that next year it's going to be full statutory no matter what. Which is what our, which is what our original offer was. Except we had a percentage thing involved in it. Brian?
I, I would say that I'm, I'm not inclined to, to be in favor of that because how, how long can you sit while, uh, uh, for lack of better words, uh, someone takes advantage of your kindness, uh, whether they really knew or not, and then push you the eleventh hour trying to get the best deal that they can when, and at least on two occasions, when we knew we had a specific amount of money we could send to the schools that your partner trumped you and added two, three percent more and made your life absolutely miserable for more, on more than one occasion at the expense of the taxpayers instead of Whitman. Now, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in Whitman, not Hanson. I understand it's a partnership, but when it comes down to it, we are responsible for the monies and the welfare of Whitman's students, not Hanson. And I just don't think that this sends a good message. We've given them a lot of time, and I really admire the efforts that were made to put this thing together. But, uh, really, I think it's been disrespectful by Hanson to, uh, handle this the way they have. And, um, you know, how long are we going to get beat up before we realize that this is not the road to go?
Okay, anyone else like to talk to the motion to reconsider? Justin?
I, I think I've said my piece so far, but, um, I just want to add that the, the stakes are pretty high on this, and I think it's at least worth trying.
Now, what are you accomplishing? What, what, fifty, five hundred thousand this year and next year, we're, we're flat out? So we just gave them another five hundred bucks, another five hundred thousand dollars?
We don't know. If the schools can bring their assessment down, we're, we're leaving a lot of scenarios out. So if the schools can reduce their assessment through either E and D or contractual obligations or COVID-related reimbursements, the additional cost could be nothing. It could be what we are projected five percent growth.
Okay, all right, then why isn't, then why isn't the motion based on the fact that the department, that the school department will bring their costs down through, we'll say, um, zero raises for all employees, like we had to do?
Again, you're in a bargaining situation, Dan. They can't
That's right.
make that a part of our agreement.
Good, well, we're bargaining now.
No, but we're not bargaining with the teachers' union.
Yeah, well.
Anyone else? John, you got anything to say?
Problem with hanging around.
Yeah, no, um, you know, I, I, I agree that
Yeah, the finance committee is going to be really happy with this vote.
I know, I know. All I'm going to say is I think closing the window for negotiation is not a good idea in my opinion. Um, however, I do agree that, um, there should be a limit on what we are willing to pay. And I think maybe the limit we're willing to pay is only three hundred and five thousand dollars. So then that way, if we're going in at fifteen five, then, you know, we can that makes the school get some skin in the game as well. So they're going to have to come up to figure out a way to bring their assessment down. It's up to them how they do it, whether it's through E and D or whether it's through other methods. But if we put a limit on the negotiation, if we're not going to pay any more than fifteen five, um, you know, now it's three hundred and seventy five more instead of five hundred. Um, and obviously, next year it has to be a hundred percent, um,
statutory.
Okay, so, and so now you're saying that the school should, the school should be paying Hanson's responsibility. Why didn't the schools come down in their assessment when we had to come up with eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of free cash because we had, we couldn't afford the eight and a half percent? Why didn't the schools come down for us then? They did.
I'm not, I'm speaking past, I'm speaking going forward, you know, and, and, uh, you know, right now, the negotiation and between Whitman and Hanson, but I think, you know, the school needs to get involved here, and if they can bring their assessment down so that, you know, we don't pay any more than fifteen five, then, you know, then they've just contributed to it as well. I'm not, how they do it, that's up to them.
Yeah, and if, and if I'm a school committee, I'm still going to push for a budget that has four extra teachers in it. Because I think that's what the schools need.
I think, I, I agree with that as well. I think it should also include the four extra teachers. So that may make them even come down, but, oh, if the, if the teachers' union votes for no raise, I don't know if those teachers have a shot to get hired anyway, if they've just went, uh, no cola and, you know, but I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know how that works.
If I can call, I would actually ask I think, Dan, you're right, Brian, you're right. I, the, my original vote was right. What I don't like is if the, the twelfth hour, we've cut ourselves off from even going to Hanson tomorrow and saying we need, what's the final offer? Is that not negotiation? Are we not blading, that's the problem. It's, but I want the money, but we don't know. If Hanson come, could come to us and say, look, we tapped stabilization, we emptied it out, we're two hundred thousand short. Do, do we let the school go to one twelfth? That's what the vote we just made did. I, I just had the problem with the vote limiting our actions is what I'm saying. I'm not voting to give them more money.
Right, I, I see that.
Well, that's, that's true too. You know, we, we're the ones that are going to set our, um, our Article Two. Well, that's that's true, too. You know, we we're the ones that are going to set our our article, too. And we're the ones that are going to our budget. Once we hear from the schools what their budget is that so that does not necessarily mean. But. We're cutting them off totally.
Frank, I have a question. Do you just off the top of your head? Do you know roughly? What kind of wiggle were we having this budget? Because the numbers I were looking at didn't look like we had much at all.
If we voted the budget the way it sits today, we would have around $800,000. In uncommitted funds. And it's all free cash.
Well, remember, Frank, though, we're going to have to fund the debt of the middle school feasibility, whatever, whatever.
There are any number of options we could do. We could, we could. Lower the debt to year two. Through a ban, we could finance it for three years. The only thing we can't do right now, if we vote everything that's present. Is use free cash to pay the debt because we only have a 29.
Right.
However. This also assumes that every article that's requested is going to be. Approved. And that is an uncertainty right now. Where we're cutting back on revenue, we may have to check and look at some of the. Acknowledgements we've made to spend money that we're spending. We still don't know what's going on with 160,000 for generators and 179 for the phone system. And that's a big number when we start talking about the issues we're talking about now.
The other, the other thing you need to consider, too, is we know right off the bat, we're getting 512,000 of indirect costs that will replenish our free cash once it's certified in October. That's just the minimum. I mean, we know.
Right.
It could be another, there's going to be more than that, but that's a guarantee. So if we if we end up spending, you know, free cash on to 500, we know come October or whenever it's certified. The indirect gives us the 512 back. So that will replenish free cash.
Can I ask a question? With our motion, with our vote standing from earlier. That I think all of us barring Justin. Very much on the same same thought philosophy. Would it? Be if if Hanson then presented an offer to us. Would that motion? Could we make a motion now that we would acknowledge that that offer publicly at one of our meetings? And discuss it at a minimum?
Sure, we could do that. I would think.
Is there an advantage to that rather than continuing to participate in negotiations?
Well. I think there is because you've now put the ball back in that court, Justin.
Right.
We, you know. We have made made two offers. And and I, when when I say that, I don't want people to get confused that we made offers on their behalf. Any of these offers obviously had to go in front of our board and then would would be approved at town meeting. So when we talk about making offers, it's not us just spending the taxpayers' money. But I would hate to think. We were complete completely shutting the dialogue off, but I think it's time for them to step up. So I would. Just. If you would pull your motion, Kyle, I'll make one.
Sure, I'll pull it. Who seconded it?
He did it. Randy did.
Okay, you take the second back, too? Thank you. So what's your motion now?
My motion would be that i- if an offer from Hanson came to our board, that it would be publicly addressed and discussed at one of our meetings.
I'll second that.
So what you're saying is that the previous vote will stand and we would reconsider any offer that was reasonable?
No. The reconsideration negates that previous vote.
We didn't reconsider it.
We didn't reconsider.
Okay.
That. Basically, if there is, it, we would not be at the forefront leading negotiation at this point. If they, if the town administrator presented something to Frank, that it would at least be. Brought in front of the public at one of our meetings and discussed. That that would be my motion.
Okay, I second it, but I can't. Does somebody second that? Justin did. Okay.
I'll second that.
So in essence, you're leaving the door open this month. Right?
I think essentially what we're seeing is. We are now. In a position where we're expecting the statutory method to be funding for 2021. However, should Hanson present an offer, we will give it due consideration.
Right. Yeah, and it's somebody somewhere, it's got to be clear that. There have been offers on the board through the regional assessment agreement committee. To compromise, and they've been rejected. I mean, somebody's, you know, otherwise what's going to happen after tonight is you're going to have somebody saying Whitman did. They they said, they said nuts to you, Hanson. And that's it. And we have, we haven't said that yet. We've never, we've never said that. We've offered, we've offered a couple of different scenarios. And we were turned back. So instead of our offering, what we're saying basically is instead of our offering another one. We expect that right now, the school committee has authorized a statutory assessment. And that's what we expect to get this year. However, if if what we're also saying is we would be open to suggestions if Hanson came up with a suggestion.
And what would we be open to?
I don't know.
How much?
I I I'm not going to deal in a hypothetical here.
I know what they'll offer. It was obvious what they'll offer.
Well, it's not that we have to accept it, Dan. I'm not willing, I'm not willing to go out to a second year. And I am very limited on what I think we should be paying. It's it's the just shutting the door on dialogue.
They did that at their last meeting. When she said she couldn't, she wouldn't accept what we, what we. That Justin stated.
Actually, what she said was she would discuss it with the board.
Right. Actually, basically, what she said was she's not sure her board would go for.
Right.
And their board is discussing it tonight as well. So, you know, who knows what the result of their.
So what we're telling Hanson is they've used all their lifelines and we need their final answer.
Well, then maybe she's discussing with her board is that we'll pay upfront the 500,000. But then next year, it's the full assessment. We're just on the hook for another half a million dollars for this year. Why would we do that?
Dan, that offer hasn't been formally presented to either.
Well, that's that's what Justin alluded to.
No.
It hadn't been presented to the board. And Dan, that offer would get us to where we want next year. That's why we would do it.
So you'd want to give $5,000 of Whitman's taxpayers' money? Just to balance out Hanson?
You would not rather do it, but he might consider it to avoid disrupting the region.
The only one that's disrupting the region is Hanson. That simple.
No.
I'd vote for that. Sorry.
See, this is where I disagree. If you want to cast blame on somebody. You need to cast it on the school committee and Ruth Whitner and former business.
Yes, all right, all right. I agree.
The problem starts. So this whole thing with Hanson is, Dan, if they came to us, we would be doing the same thing.
Correct.
We would, we would be in the same position.
But I don't think the town of Hanson's speaking. I think it's, I I don't think they're speaking.
I'm not paying attention. I don't know if anyone is paying attention to the Hanson Selectment meeting. But it very well could be going on that the 50 50 offer, they may have voted to accept that tonight.
But but do you want to pay the 50 50? I don't.
Dan, there's a good chance that when the commissioner takes over, we could be paying more money. I mean.
Why would you say that? Why? We're paying more than we have to.
The memo that the commissioner issued last week said it would consider other methods. Talking to Chris Lynch today, it seems like it would need the approval of both towns. But they're not locked into the statutory method under the memo.
Or all of a sudden, they could come in and. The Commission of Education could implement kindergarten on us. And we would have to come up with that. We were losing control of, both towns are losing fiscal control of the school district. That to me is risky. So if I if I had to pay a little more to make sure that didn't happen, that's what I'm trying to secure. But there's nothing here that says it's not coming in front of our boards.
I don't, I don't want to, I do not want to say to the Hanson Board of Selectmen. Okay, we consider an offer of us covering a little bit more than we have to for a year. Why would, I don't want to do that. I think we've done that. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I understand where you're going with it. But I think it's on, it's on the, it's right, it's on the schools. It's on the previous administration.
It absolutely, it truly is.
Both Whitman and Hanson would have no problem if back when it was supposed to have been done. Our budgets would have been adjusted to what the right numbers were, and we and neither town would be in this position. But they are. And now it's time to get corrected.
Well, we clearly can't go backwards. So we might have to go forwards.
And.
And and if.
And I mean. But the budget is absolutely tight. We don't have spare money. I get it. We're not taking this out of a savings account and and just shuffling it off. At this point, it's give and give and take where.
No, it's give and give.
Well, we're giving and taking from somewhere else is what I meant.
Right, okay. Yeah, we're giving, they're taking.
But.
No.
And and I could be wrong here in looking at this the wrong way. For me, I don't, I think shutting the door to discussion. We can always vote no.
Right, yeah. It doesn't mean that we're stuck with it. And.
Right, at the end of the day.
It makes sense. Let them chew on their cud for a while and determine whether they want to come back to us and talk. But.
And it doesn't mean we have to accept it.
I think that that's the right move.
So I would just want to be open that we at least. Talked about it. Publicly if an offer did come. And by no means do we need to say, if you make us an offer, we'll take it. But is is. We're saying no now. I guess it's, you say no to their face if they would come. If your if your opinion's there, then you're solid now. You're going to be solid there, but. At least there was. I guess a common respect in the partnership.
Okay.
At a minimum.
I understand where you're going with it.
And I don't even know if we need a vote for that. Yes, we've shut off negotiation, like we we presented our case. I don't have a problem with that. We want statutory. But if they came to. Logistically, I don't know if that's illegal, so. Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
So where do we stand? Where do we stand, folks? I forget. Do we have a, do we have a motion on the floor or do we take it back?
We have a motion in the second.
With with the vote we made.
Right.
If the Hanson TA sent you something, would that prevent you presenting it to our board?
No, if regardless of the vote we took, if someone reached out to me from Hanson and said, look, we'd like to make a proposal. I would bring that back to the board because the vote didn't foreclose any future action, just said, this is our position. But our position can change, notwithstanding the vote. The board could consider other options and take a subsequent vote that's different from what we did tonight.
All right. And then I guess we may not even need a vote, so.
You know, realistically, if if we can convey to Hanson, and I'll certainly reach out to John tomorrow morning and say, hey, look. Reaffirm the position that we should be statutory. July 1st. If you folks should happen to come up with some idea that. You might think is workable, talk to us. But other than that, we're prepared to vote for a statutory assessment.
And I think that's clear. I mean. I think all of us at one point or another through this whole discussion have spoke on the legitimacy of the statutory method. Why we want it, that we were, we have been grieved through this process, Dan. I. I get it. And. But. I think there's bigger things at risk and we are partners and. You know, it's a marriage. This is a marriage. And and do you ever say to your wife? Don't, don't talk to me. I'm not discussing that anymore.
No, I never, I never do that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, how long does that last?
I have no.
Oh, five minutes.
You know, you can, you can disagree in a way that with lines of communication are still open. So that's, that's all I'm getting at, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, I think what I'd like to come out of tonight's meeting then is it just, it should be clear, and we made it clear to the the finance committee. And we're making it clear now that we believe that we ought to be using the statutory method. That we had asked the schools to assess the towns by the statutory method. They did so. We're still in the same position. We still believe that. We have made a couple of offers to to Hanson in a compromising way. They haven't been accepted. At least they haven't been accepted yet. And at this particular point in time, we're. Still open to suggestion. But we're also reaffirming our original. Motion months ago that the statutory method is the one we should be using. In fact, the method is legal.
Right.
And not the one that and not the. The alternative assessment method in our agreement, which one of the people from from the state said. Isn't legal at all. No, 1991.
Right.
So if there's a, if there's a way that that can be communicated. Then I think it's probably the best we can do.
And I think with that statement, Kyle, you put the ball back in their court. And now they need to take us a very good look at at where they want us to go. Because in less than 60 days, 112 kicks in. And what they need to realize is that payment comes behind that. So. I think your statement said it all, Kyle.
Okay, is there, is there a way to memorialize that statement by? Asking Frank to the town administrator in Hanson and deliver the message? Or Justin Canada is at the next agreement meeting, too.
The next meeting is not scheduled, so in the interest of time, it may be worth sending the town administrators together.
All right. That says a lot. That says a lot, too. Okay. Would you guys like, if someone like to make a motion that Frank deliver that message to the town administrator in Hanson?
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Okay, Brian.
Roll call, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
I'll vote, I'll vote yes. I'll vote, I'll vote yes.
That's fine.
Okay.
You didn't expect anything different, did you?
No.
No.
Dan, I did, I did.
Really?
Okay, we, how about discussing hours for annual town election?
How does nine to five sound?
It's the way we've done it always. You know, the more I think about it, the more I'm in favor of that. Because the more hours you have to, to put people in a room is the better chance that they're gonna be able to be socially dis- appropriately. When you, it doesn't make any sense to me to restrict the hours and to still say you're worried about the health and welfare of the people going into that room. That's my, that's my thought anyway.
You can go to Home Depot and Stop &amp; Shop, you might as well go vote.
Pardon me?
You can go to Home Depot and Stop &amp; Shop, you might as well go vote.
Yeah. Yeah, but we sort of have to make sure, we, well, we're, we're keeping the regular hours. And I'm suggesting we keep the regular hours, we don't reduce them.
Well, I suggest that we go in the front door and out the side doors.
Well, whatever, that's up to the town clerk to work something out.
I will tell you that I filed for my mail-in ballot.
Yeah, so did I. Oh, and Justin? I don't know, I, I kinda like putting the ballot in that machine and knowing that it's there and being counted.
And it's you that put it in.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I, I firm it up one too, because I'm one of those vulnerable people that isn't supposed to be outside of the house. All right, is there any other business, Frank?
I, I just have something on board.
No, actually, I just wanted to show you what one going back looks like.
Thanks, yeah, Randy.
Would, do we have the option of using any other location as with the town, in conjunction with the town hall for voting?
We do, we can split polling places, but not without a whole lot of bureaucracy because Don would have to file new polling information with the state, and I don't know what we gain out of it.
But just spreading the crowds out, that's all I was thinking, that with the, running a full eight hours, if, if you went two different locations.
What if you do one and two upstairs and two and four downstairs? And a small auditorium?
Well, the, the town clerk's gonna figure something out. I mean, all, all we have to figure out is the number of hours.
All right. I talked to her today, Milton, who has a population comparable to ours, held their election last weekend, and my number, if my memory serves me, she said there were six hundred votes cast. Two-thirds of them were by mail. There is a real push, and now that we've established the hours for the election, once it's voted, did we vote?
No.
No.
We haven't even made a motion on it yet.
Right, there will be a significant public, publicizing of the opportunity to request a ballot and mail it in, or to even drop it off. We're looking into a Dropbox for ballots that can be put in the front of the town hall. Everything we can to accommodate people voting freely, openly, and unencumbered.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to set the hours for town, town election? Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, set the voting hours from nine to five on, for town election voting.
When was that, June twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, that exhausts the, exhausts the agenda. And it's time to go home. Motion to adjourn is in order. Except I'm already home. Okay, all those in favor? Let's see, Dan? Brian? Randy? Justin?
Yes.
We're out, we're out of here.
Watch your hands.
Good night, all.
Stay healthy.
Night, everybody.